Now being five thirty on Thursday, October twenty six, I'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Deschutes County Planning Commission. Our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from September twenty eighth. Is there a motion regarding the minutes?
I so move.
Okay, um, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes from September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Is there any discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, seeing them, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. Um, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Abstain, I was not attending.
Okay, um, Commissioner Cyrus?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Trobridge?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll also vote yes, so we have uh our motion passes, six in favor, one abstaining, um, the minutes from September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three have been approved. So we will go to our next item on the agenda, public comment. So this is public comment about things not on the agenda. So later in the agenda, we have our public hearing regarding the um comprehensive plan, um, but at this time we'll take any comments that have to do with items that are not on the agenda tonight. Are there any other comments about other things that you may be interested in or concerned about? And if you're on Zoom and you have a comment about an item not on the agenda tonight, um, can you raise your Zoom hand? We're not seeing any Zoom hands raised either, so we'll just go ahead and proceed to our next item, which are our action items, the first of which is the public hearing for the Deschutes County twenty forty comprehensive plan. And we're gonna gonna go ahead and turn it over to Nicole Mardell, our senior planner, and I notice we also have Matt Hasty, our consultant here, present on Zoom, um, and uh, I'll turn it over to you, Nicole.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners, for the record, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner for Deschutes County. I just want to make sure we can hear Matt. Um, so Matt, would you mind testing your mic for us?
Testing, one, two, three, yeah, awesome.
Okay, so with that, um, I will get us started with our uh hearing opening statements here. Okay, so this is the time and place set for hearing on file number two four seven dash twenty three dash zero 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 six four four dash TA concerning the Deschutes County twenty forty comprehensive plan update. The Planning Commission will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony, and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. This hearing is also being recorded. The Planning Commission may make a decision on this matter today, continue the public hearing to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff will give a report on this issue. We will then open the hearing to all present and ask folks to present testimony at one of the tables um here in the middle of the room. Um, following testimonies, staff will provide closing remarks if requested by. Record materials can be viewed on the project website, which is deschutes.org slash twenty forty, and from there you'll click on the hearings page. This is a hybrid hearing. If you're participating in person, please fill out a blue sign up sheet at the side of the room and submit it to staff. Uh, you will then be called up to the table to provide testimony um as we we run through each person. For uh those who are testifying, please be sure to state your first name and last name for the record, as well as your mailing address, and we are instituting a three minute time limit on testimony just to ensure an orderly and efficient hearing. For those who are testifying remotely, uh, please indicate if you'd like to provide testimony when when the the time uh is announced by using the raise hand button in Zoom, or by dialing star nine if you're participating via phone. The chair will then call on participants with hands raised to provide their testimony. Any written testimony provided to staff, uh, if you're here in the room, you can hand that to me, or if you're remote, you can email uh, the address on the screen here, nicole dot mardell at deschutes dot org. Uh, questions to and from the chair may be entertained at any time at the chair's discretion. Cross examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask questions of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the chair after being recognized. The chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any commissioner for a conflict of interest. Uh, this challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. Should any commissioner be challenged, the member may be dis- may disqualify himself or herself, withdraw from the hearing, or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide this issue. At this time, uh, do any commissioners, members of the commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived as conflict of interest? Interest, excuse me.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, state the nature of same and whether you can proceed? Not seeing anyone, um.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on conflicts of interest?
Okay, as no challenges are presented, the hearing is now open and staff will proceed with a brief report.
Thank you, Commissioners. From here, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Hasty, who's our project consultant uh to start the presentation. Thanks, Matt.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Also, Nicole, I just saw your text, so I'm sorry, I didn't see that before. Um, yeah, so thanks for having me here. Um, I will provide a fairly brief presentation, really focusing on the comprehensive plan update process and just kind of the an overview of the plan and how it's organized. For the Planning Commission, you will have seen a lot of these slides before, so apologies for that duplication. Um, but just want to give everybody kind of an overview of the process we went through and um and what's generally in the plan. But won't go into a huge amount of detail. All right, next slide, please. So just kind of a reminder that um the comprehensive plan um uh sort of local comprehensive plans flow from Oregon statewide land use program. Um, that requires all cities and counties um to prepare and update comprehensive plans. There are also a number of state statutes and administrative rules um that provide, provide, excuse me, pretty specific criteria for development um outside um with both within city limits and outside of city limits. Um, and so the county, you know, needs to be consistent with all of those statewide rules and and goals and guidelines. So just kind of a reminder that the county plan is all local comprehensive plans are unique to those cities or counties, but um they also do have to meet some state requirements. So. Uh, next slide. Uh, so a little bit more about that, you know, some of the things that inform a comprehensive plan, the types of requirements I just talked about. Um, really, you know, almost first and foremost, community input, and I'll talk more about that as we go through the presentation, as well as data and analysis that informs um uh information and policies um and strategies related to specific issues and conditions. Um, and comprehensive plans are intended to be just that comprehensive in their nature, so they um address a wide variety um of different topics. Land use, housing, the other things you see kind of in the middle of this graphic. And then they in turn inform a lot of the things the county does. They inform the county zoning code, kind of how the county invests um money, um how it how it um provides for staff report resources for specific programs. Um, it's used to determine whether or not um plan and zone changes are consistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan. And it also informs environmental regulations um that the county um adopts and implements as well. So uh it's great to be here uh this evening. It's been it's been a while on this process, but it's been a good sort of deliberative process. You know, over the course of the process, it's about a two year process, um eleven planning commissions. Um, and we really appreciate all your work, planning commission members, in terms of being our official uh review body for the policies in the plan and the plan itself. Um, and again, significant public engagement, particularly on some of the um high profile and or um issues where there wasn't necessarily unanimity of opinions, and I'll talk about a few of those as we go through as well. So, next slide. Um, and as you'll remember, um, you know, this has been, this process has been conducted in these five phases. So first, just kind of getting ourselves up and running, putting together a community engagement plan, getting some of the sort of processes in place to inform people about the planning process throughout. Phase two really was about starting to develop policies, um, community input on the county's vision. Updating policies to address best practices and looking at the policies that were previous in the previously in the plan to see which ones need to be tweaked, um, were no longer relevant, et cetera. And then ultimately working with you all as well as members of the broader community to get input on policies, particularly with a focus on things that um people talked about as being important to them and or where we heard different opinions on things. So that was a lot of the focus there. And then once we got through that process, putting together the actual comprehensive plan document. So preparing that document and then putting together um a set of findings at the, and that was a county staff did that. Really, all of these things, I see we, it's been a really great partnership, I think, between um county staff, um, the consulting team, the planning commission, and and community partners around the county. So, and then now we are into the uh into the adoption stage, so um DLCD notice, that's the notice that gets sent to the Department of Land Conservation and Development thirty five days before a public hearing like this, so that's gone out. Um, we are now having this hearing, and ultimately uh there will be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners in terms of, you know, whether to adopt the plan. So uh, those are the last steps in this this longer process. So I'll say a little bit about some of those community engagement efforts. Um, the goals of that process really were to lead a robust engagement effort. Um, and I think I mentioned this last time, but the county even before adoption has won an award um for the engagement process on this, which is pretty awesome. So I'd say that's at least pretty good, you know, sort of affirmation that it's been a good, robust process, hearing a diversity of opinions, and I'll kind of talk about that and kind of all the different meetings and groups um that we've, that the teams engaged with. Again, a large part of that's been staff's work. Um, and being as inclusive as possible, you know, trying to to hear from a lot of different people and kind of from all parts of the county. So, next one. Um, oh, and I remembered something I forgot to say in an earlier slide. Um, I'm gonna say it now, even though it's not on this slide. So in the slide where we just sort of talked about outcomes of the plan, um, I want to note that um, the planning document itself, um, we're not updating the county's goal five inventory as part of this process. And we're not amending um uh specific local area plans as part of this process. So just, I it was in my notes from an earlier slide, so apologies for that. So this is just, this slide's a summary of engagement efforts. And here, note that some of these numbers are actually already kind of out of date because we put this together as part of putting the plan together. So we'll want to update this before we finalize it. But for instance, eight planning commissions, we've actually commission meetings, we've actually had eleven. Um, I think the email contact list is now up to like five hundred and thirty people or something like that. Um, and a number of folks attending small group um meetings uh is actually closer to, uh, I think it's closer to four hundred. Did I get that right, Nicole? Yeah. So, really, I think from my um perspective, a tremendous amount of engagement. I mean, I think that the county should really feel good about the amount and level of engagement, and I know that staff really put just a huge number of hours into getting out there and talking to folks. Um, went out and talked to numerous different groups um around the county, lots of um both in-person open houses and responses to online open houses. A lot of people visited the website. Ton of social media posts, so just a lot of engagement, and again, with a goal of talking to people throughout the county, both geographically and in terms of different groups. And one of the ways that um that staff did that was through this meetings in a box process. So that was going out to specific groups or locations and talking to people in smaller groups. So sixty six of those, which is a lot. Um, Nicole's been super busy, her and her staff, um, doing that, so that's awesome. Um, and you know, just trying to again hear um about a diverse set of issues um and comments. So, um, lots of work on the engagement process, as well as online. Um, I mentioned um online engagement earlier, and we've talked about this previously, but we had two different online online survey efforts. The last one, we used a a platform or application called Considerate, which allowed us to really kind of dig into some specific policy issues and ask people how they felt about these issues, sort of which side of the issue um they favored the most and why, you know, why they did favor something or why not. So that was super helpful for us, and especially, again, the focus of this effort was on those areas where we had some um good discussions um amongst you all and amongst people out in the community and wanted to get a better sense of you know, at least the folks who responded to this survey, kind of where did the majority of them? Um, where did their opinions tend to tend to lean on the spectrum? So that was super helpful. Um, so just, you know, a few things that came up, I would say, most frequently in talking to people. Housing and the need for housing um for residents of Deschutes County. Water use and management, huge huge issue, and it just kind of affects a lot of different elements of the comprehensive plan and a lot of different things that people are um are care about or are concerned about. Um, destination resorts and just sort of the number of them and the potential impacts of them on um need for housing or on water supply or things like that. Um, obviously wildfire risk and management, big issue in Deschutes County, um particularly given some of the trends you've seen in the county over the last ten years or so. Um, the sort of support and desire for continued agricultural um viable, continued viable agricultural um practices and concerns and the need to address um barriers related to farming or agricultural production. Um, wildlife habitat and other natural resources, the need to protect those or manage them, and also to come up with sort of a a balanced set of strategies towards that end. Um, dark skies, um, that's important to a lot of folks in the county. Um, is just, you know, something that helps um define the county to a degree, and also is an opportunity both for people who live in the county, but also for kind of visitors as well. And then climate change and resiliency, this was definitely on people's minds. It's one of the things people mentioned um during the course of the meetings that we had, and it's one of the things we asked about in the online survey that I mentioned a few minutes ago. So I'll say just a little bit about the draft document, um, really about kind of how it's structured and what it includes, what type of information it includes. So this is just essentially the table of contents of the different chapters of the comprehensive plan. Um, like a lot of comprehensive plans, um, and like the statewide planning goals, it starts with community involvement, um, which is appropriate. Um, and I won't list all these other ones, but um gives you a sense of sort of the breadth of the of the plan. Um, and this is, I would say, a fairly typical arrangement. Um, and then each chapter, within each chapter, there's information about opportunities and challenges and constraints associated with that particular topic or set of issues. A little bit of context in terms of, you know, how does this play out in Deschutes County? Um, a list of key issues that came out of the conversations we had with community members in the county when we were out there talking to people. And then, of course, goals and policies, which really kind of form the heart of the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, and those are the things that, you know, you're you're ultimately implementing or using to make other decisions moving forward. Some of the sources of information that we use to inform um what you see in the comprehensive plan. We prepared a series of background reports on specific topics um early in the planning process, and then we use those to build the the narrative um that you see in each of the comprehensive plan chapters. Along the way, even after those background reports, we conducted some additional research and analysis related to specific issues. Obviously, um, community engagement um played a large part in informing uh a lot of the narrative in the plan, as well as the policies. Discussion among you all, the planning commission about policies, you know, we had a lot of meetings to talk through those policies and and I do our best to reflect those um discussions in the the draft set of policies in the plan. Um, a fair number of agencies provided comments related to the plan, some were um, you know, fairly minor, some a little more substantive, um, and we shared some of that with you at a previous meeting. Um, and then, of course, the existing comprehensive plan. Um, you know, it didn't just sort of, that all that information didn't just go away, but we did update that information to make sure it reflects current conditions, best practices, and all of these other things that I just mentioned. Um, that inform the comprehensive plan. And that is it for my overview. Hopefully that wasn't too fast. Um, but uh yeah, that's all I have for now, and happy to answer questions later on when that time comes.
Beautiful. So now I'm just going to take over for the last couple of slides, and we'll open it up uh for the public hearing. Um, but I wanted to note some of the um public and agent agency comments that we've received since the draft plan was released, and your packet went out last Thursday. So I want to emphasize what Matt was already emphasizing, and that a lot of communicate community engagement went into this plan, but what we have before us today is still just a draft. So it's not final at this point, it still can be amended, and that's part of what we're seeking from this public hearing is any gaps, any missing items, or any perspectives that may or may not be represented. Um, so we did receive um upwards of, I believe, ninety five comments, and a few were still coming into um my inbox right as we were leading up the hearing. We did receive two requests to continue the hearing, both the oral and written record of the hearing to November ninth um to allow for additional testimony. Staff is in agreement with this. Um, I also wanted to note just a couple of the key themes from public comments. We received about thirty eight comments regarding um a a bridge, river crossing outside of Benz U G B in the southwest. Um, we received quite a bit of public comment related to rezoning of farmland, both um comments in support of um rezoning farmland that may not be fit, and also greater protections to avoid rez- rezoning of farmland. Quite a few comments regarding wildlife inventories and protections, water planning. And then I wanted to touch on um one particular item. We did hear from quite a few folks initially before this hearing from the Three Rivers area. This is a census designated place between Sun River and Le Pine. Um, so we actually held a a meeting in a box there last Wednesday to better understand some of the issues that are popping up in this particular area of the county. Um, and a lot of their concerns were related to um potentially the Newberry Country Plan. Um, so that was something that we will offer during the deliberations processes, just adding a a policy about potentially, you know, prioritizing updating that plan. They also had some concerns about groundwater in southern Deschutes County um and about um some wetland concerns as well. Um, they also had some transportation comments. Um, but I also wanted to emphasize that this process um is mirrored by a transportation system plan process. That's a separate plan with much more detail, and the board is holding a hearing on that item, I believe, on November twenty sixth, twenty ninth. Um, so we um are trying to direct transportation-related comments to that process as that um is a bit more fitting for those comments. I also wanted to point out that we received a letter from uh our quasi municipal municipal agency partner, C O I D. Um, so they provided quite a bit of detail on some edits to uh the comp plan narrative and policy language surrounding water. Uh, we also received uh another agency comment right before this meeting from Oregon Fish and Wildlife Department. And just wanted to note that we have been meeting with agencies, um, but we understand that not all uh agents the chance to go through this with a fine tooth comb. Uh, so we'll continue to work with those agencies to better understand some of the technical information that can inform the narrative and the policies. Um, and of course, bring that to the the planning commission throughout the duration of the process. Um, with that, um, I just wanted to note, next steps, the board has the option, or the planning commission, rather, has the option today to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain, close the hearing and set a date for deliberations, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. And as you heard, staff is recommending um continuing both the oral and written record. Um, and with that, uh concludes my presentation, and we welcome any questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Nicole before we move forward? Okay, um, then just a couple notes from me, um, a reminder to the commissioners to all speak into our mics. Um, because if we don't, then not only will the folks in the room not be able to hear us, but especially folks on Zoom will not be able to hear what we're saying. So, um, second, uh, uh, comment relevant to what Nicole just said. Uh, we do have some times set aside in our schedule for additional hearings, so um, just to set everyone's hearts at ease a little bit, um, since we do have a lot of people in the room, and I assume we probably have a lot of people on Zoom. Um, and I'm sure there's a lot of people out there who haven't had a chance to thoroughly vet the plan, who would like a little bit more time, and um, so I will be strongly encouraging everybody to vote for keeping the record open, and we'll do that formally at the end. Um, we have these blue sheets, so if you want to make a comment tonight, fill out one of these sheets, they're over there. Um, and if you're on Zoom and you want to make a comment, um, we'll be doing the Zoom part of the hearing second, and um, you'll just raise your Zoom hand, or if you're on the phone, not Zoom, but the telephone, then you press star nine, and that will raise your phone hand. Um, okay, um, so if you have a question for staff, um, please say the question during your comment. And we'll have Nicole and Matt keep track of questions for them, and then we'll do those questions at the end so that they can kind of come back up and address any questions people might have. I think that's everything. So without further ado, I will go ahead and um do what we've done before, which is call the first person up to uh to the stand here, but then also have a person on deck, um, kind of getting ready. Uh, so the first person is going to be Paul Lipscomb. And on deck, we're gonna have Keith Cyrus.
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you for all the work that you've already put in on this plan.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but um also I forgot to remind everyone, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Lipscomb. Um, my mailing address is Peel Box five seven nine Sisters, Oregon. And um, I am neighbors with Mr. Cyrus, who's coming up next. Um, I, I'm a member of the Oregon Land and Water Alliance. And I have had a chance since it came out um a month or two ago to go through the shoots counties uh draft comprehensive plan, and I've taken another look at the Oregon State planning goals and guidelines as well. And it appears to me that there are still some areas that may need a little bit more work, and I can't identify all of our issues with respect to each subject, but there are five areas right now, but I will do that in writing. And right now, I just want to mention that a a big uh concern of ours is water conservation due to the rapidly declining aquifers or water tables. Secondly, to residential uses in new or expanded destination resorts. I think it it should be clarified because there's been some confusion on this in the past. That now, because the urban growth boundary of Bend has expanded and the number of people inside it uh exceed the number of a hundred thousand, the um home sites that for necessary for employees and management can still go forward, but other residential uses would now not be permitted under state law and under the existing comprehensive plan. Um, third issue is going to be balancing fish and wildlife compatibility with human land uses, and I know we've all been thinking about that for a long time. And then protection of farmland for the future. Um, we all need to be thinking about being stewards for the future and our future farmland needs here and what can be done to protect that. And finally, but but not least important, is compatibility of existing uses and new uses with uh Deschutes County's dark sky ordinance. And I think that there is, there is further work that could and should be done in there, that area as well. With that, I think my three minutes are probably up, um, but you'll be hearing from me in writing. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. Okay, so our next person's going to be Keith Cyrus, and then on deck, we got Randy Windlinks. Yes, please. Um, so if you're on deck, in this case Randy Windlinks, come on up, um, and have a seat whenever you're ready.
Thank you for being here. I'm Keith Cyrus. Right at seventeen two oh four, Highway one twenty six. Uh, sisters, lifetime resident. I've seen a lot of changes, unfortunately. But uh, I'm here to address the farm issues and classifications. I was involved years ago when they first did classification for farmland. We were asked to uh identify the prime farmlands and such. We were asked to identify the prime farmlands and such in Deschutes County. And so I had the opportunity to meet, put a group together with some bona fide farmers, serious farmers working as a living. And we met, started meeting and we identified what you look for is where's the best soil, where's the best climate and where you can get the best commercial acreage. You've all flown over the Midwest and seen those big pivots. We don't have much room. So anyway, we worked pretty hard at this and put a plan together, submitted to the Board of Commissioners. They told us what they wanted. So we hired an attorney personally out of our pockets, tried to draft a policy to present to the county. It wasn't suitable. The county said, well, you don't need to hire an attorney. We'll provide an attorney. We run him off on the first meeting because he would not listen to the facts coming from bona fide farmers as to what was what in Deschutes County. So finally, the county formed a overall ag committee. People really didn't know squat about farming, but that was a way to get around our committee and move forward with an ag plan. And as a result of that, there were two commissioners were put up for recall, Shepherd and Paulson. And that was back when you could go out to the college and get the students, bring them into the bus and get them to register and vote. So we didn't quite get the recall, but it was their political careers were over. And so I would, there's been a lot of monkey business going on. You have to understand that anybody with large acreages in around town don't want competition from farmland. So much of this is is been open space. I've heard people at L C D C say, oh, I don't want to see houses there. I enjoy that view when I drive by coming into Bend. And so there's much of it's personal, protecting open space for personal pleasure. So I would just ask that you take a hard look at your ag plan when you put it together. And let's be fair, let's use people that know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, so we got Randy Windlinks coming up. And we've got our next person is going to be Tony Oliver. Thank you.
My name is Randy Windlinks. I reside at five nine eight nine five Scale House Road, Bend, Oregon nine seven seven oh two. I propose these following changes to the plan. And I'm just going to start with chapter three, Farm and Forest Resources. This chapter must have the wording that includes the protection of farm and forest resources from the expansion of multiple use trails, path and other human activities that are not compatible with farm and forest practices. Farm and forest practices should not be forced to change due to trails and paths that are within or border farm and forest land in Deschutes County. This is a very similar narrative that we had with the transportation plan, but I think it's very relevant to the comp plan self. Five is natural resources. This chapter must address the current out of control homeless camping on resource lands within Deschutes County. Homeless camping fragments wildlife habitat and creates hardship on natural resources. Homeless camping proves to be very destructive to a natural environment. Human waste and garbage created by homeless camps pollute both soil and groundwater. This chapter must address all existing proposed trails and their impact on wildlife. Multiple use recreational trails are the number one cause of wildlife habitat fragmentation. I submitted once again, multiple documents supporting this testimony from multiple agencies. And these things have all come out in the last two to five years because it's now on the cutting edge because of all this traffic's been introduced into the wildlife habitat areas. And now they're realizing that the potential impact that these things are having. Natural hazards add to the wildfire paragraph the following. Considerations must be given to restricting homeless camping and multiple use trails within the urban wildfire interface areas of Deschutes County. Expansion of these trails facilities allow human expansion and activity that will lead to cataclysmic fires. And that spilled right out in the plan. That's one of the big concerns that as this climate change issue grows, we're going to have catastrophic fires. Recreation add a paragraph stating paramount necessity to protect Deschutes County wildlife habitat and resource zone lands from the fragmentation caused by the unchecked building of multiple use recreational trails. Add a paragraph mandating that Deschutes County coordinates with B L M and the Forest Service to protect wildlife habitat and resource lands over development and the use of multiple use recreational trails, which include skiing, mountain biking, hiking, backpacking, et cetera. I'm running out of time, but in conclusion, I've attached two documents. One that the Sheriff Shay Nelson added as far as restricting homeless camping on public land. And also the mandate, emergency mandate by our governor at the beginning of the year on this homeless emergency issue that we have currently in the state. And it's all relevant to this comp plan. So anything you guys can consider regarding this, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Can you hang on one second, Mr. Windlinks?
Yes.
It's a clarification question only.
Sure.
We have a question for you.
Oh.
Thank you. Agree with your points, Mr. Windlinks at protection of farm and forest resources. And protection under eight on your written material of wildlife habitat and resource zoned lands.
If you don't mind, if you could speak a little closer to the mic.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Just would like to say I agree with your points about protection of farm and forest resources under. Correct. That's what I'm doing. That's what I'm doing.
Can't say you agree.
Okay. All right. Just wondering if in addition to those threats that you list to farm and forest resources and to wildlife habitat in resource zoned lands, if you also see threats from or the need for protection from sprawling residential housing development into wildlife habitat or agricultural land.
I don't.
Thank you.
I mean, the 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 land's already zoned for that.
Okay.
I'm for protecting large property owners such as my family and the other farmers in this this county. And I don't see a real encroachment, maybe low value land, which is in question, but high value timberland, which is what my family own and high value farmland as well. And that's what we need to protect. So.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So next up, we on deck, we had Tony Oliver.
Hi, I'm Chee.
Wonderful. And on deck now we have Mark Stockham.
My name is Tony Oliver. I live at five five zero Northwest seventy four Street. That's in Redmond, Oregon. Thank you for having this hearing and for the work that went into it. I cannot speak any better than the three people who've spoken before me, and I agree with all of that. Also with what Land Watch has provided for you. The thing that I am concerned about that's more specific within the protection of farmland is the amount of quotes rural residential zoning, which has been just proliferated into our farmland areas. And as a result of that, it's been such that smaller acres than ten acres are allowed to be rural R R ten. And so I am now the beneficiary of a motocross track near me with only six acres. It's right in the middle of farmland. It's near my place. And so if I look at the the plat maps, you can see this proliferating all over the place. We should, that we need to protect our farmlands. And also you need to look at pleas when you're looking at farmlands. Sometimes it appears as if they aren't viable, but you know, sometimes cows eat a lot of trash stuff. And so what looks like, oh, that's terrible places. It's still a viable place to have a farm. So when you're going through this zoning, I would really appreciate that you would address that. But other than that, I support everything that's been said so far. Thank you so much and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your time too. And on, so we got Mark Stockham up here and we got Rory Isbell coming up.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name's Mark Stockham. My mailing address is P O Box one three four five Sisters, Oregon. I'm passionate about the Deschutes twenty forty comp plan because it helps guide the future growth of Deschutes County. And after reviewing the comprehensive plan and key community considerations, I'm concerned that Deschutes County won't be prepared to successfully accommodate the expected population growth of ninety thousand plus residents in the next twenty five years. That's taken straight from the plan. Specifically, I'm concerned about the growth of Deschutes County will be harmed through placing more restrictions on more restrictions on rezoning farmland. I stand with Randy that high value farming should be protected. So this next one I'm talking about is about low value farmland. I do not support more restrictions for rezoning farmland because several thousand acres of Deschutes County were incorrectly zoned farmland E F U in the past. The several thousand acres of farmland are incorrectly zoned due to poor soil quality, geologic and topographic features, lack of irrigation rights. There already is a thorough legal process in place for landowners to rezone low value farmland through Deschutes County and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, also known as the D L C D. This rezoning process is time exhaustive and I recommend that Deschutes County streamline it by allowing only adjacent landowners to file appeals against the county land use decision and enforce appellants to pay the rezoning applicant's legal fees if the appellant loses. If low value farmland to Deschutes County is not possible to farm profitably and does not qualify as farmland under Oregon's statewide planning goals, I recommend rezoning the land to M U A ten or R R ten zoning. So it can be utilized for housing opportunities to help us prepare for the expected population growth of the county. I'd like to point out that the six hundred forty acre Stevens Road tract was zoned farmland until it was rezoned to M U A ten around the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve timeline. The rezoning of Stevens Road tract was validated by a detailed soils report, lack of irrigation rights and any history of irrigation. The land had not been used for producing crops or grazing livestock and the land was vacant and not part of a farm unit. Now Stevens Road tract has a master plan for higher density residential development and will serve as an important housing project for workforce housing and single family dwellings for the future to come in Bend. Creating more restrictions for rezoning farmland would cause Deschutes County to miss out on critical housing opportunities and inflate current housing costs. If Deschutes County wants to help meet Governor Kotek's statewide annual goal of creating thirty six thousand housing units across all levels of affordability, we need less red tape to do it. On with this, the Deschutes County twenty forty plan has been an important planning discussion topic for over two years. I'd like to request the planning department to upload the entire record for the Deschutes twenty forty comp plan. And the Planning Commission to host a few additional sessions to collect more public testimony for this important discussion. Thank you so much for letting me share my input.
Thank you. Okay, so next up we got Rory Isbell and then we're going to have Adam Smith on behalf of C O I D.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Before I begin, I have a copy of our written comments that I'd like to hand you. So for the record, my name's Rory Isbell. I'm a staff attorney with Central Oregon Land Watch. Our address is twenty eight forty three Northwest Lolo Drive, Suite two hundred, Bend, Oregon nine seven seven zero three. I just handed staff a full copy of our comments that includes several attachments for reference. The version I handed you all is just the sort of main body of our written comments without the attachments, but they're all, the attachments and everything are already uploaded to the record online. So thank you Chair Kieris and Planning Commissioners for hearing testimony tonight. Also want to thank county staff and their consultant team for all the work so far on this draft plan. Some of the new and updated goal and policy language. We see it really responds to the community concerns that staff has heard through its various public outreach efforts. In several other areas, though, we see a need for further work. I'm going to use the short time to talk big picture, but there are a lot of specifics in our written comments. Earlier this year, a coalition of twelve community organizations submitted a joint letter to the county more at the start of this comp plan update process, expressing some high level concerns about the current trajectory of the county. We've seen wildlife populations decline, groundwater aquifers drop and springs dry up. Rural and agricultural lands developed for luxury housing, open spaces lost, all the while accelerating climate change is exacerbating each one of those issues. So we, this coalition of twelve organizations called on the county to change that trajectory, to do more to protect those natural resources in this next twenty year planning period. Unfortunately, Deschutes County has become a leader in the state in not protecting its rural farmlands, rangelands, forests and open space. One of the attachments I've provided is a copy of the Department of Land and Conservation's Farm and Forest Report, which they release every two years. The most recent report calls out Deschutes County is second in the state for approval of dwellings on farmland. Very few of those dwellings are for farm purposes. They're non-farm dwellings that don't support farm use of those rural lands and instead just gentrify our rural farmlands and drive up costs for for real farmers. The county has also approved, and this is not in our written comments, but I got this information this week from county staff. The county has approved fourteen, what we call spot zonings, so rezoning agricultural land over the past twelve years since two thousand eleven. Fourteen have been approved. There's four currently on review total. That's two thousand eight hundred and eighty six acres of agricultural land that the county has spot zoned for, again, these usually rural residential uses, sometimes industrial and commercial uses unplanned in far flowing areas of the county.
Unfortunately, you're out of time.
Oh, all right.
But we do have your document, so we will definitely all read it. Yeah, thank you. And next we've got Adam Smith and on deck, we're going to have Doug White.
Good evening. My name is Adam Smith. I'm a land use attorney with Robbie Williamson Wyatt. Our firm represents Central Oregon Irrigation District. My address is three sixty Southwest Bond Street, Suite five hundred, Bend, Oregon nine seven seven zero two. I want to echo sentiments from other folks and start by thanking the Planning Commission for your work thus far on developing the comprehensive plan and the work going forward. I have every expectation that you'll go through multiple public hearings, review a lot of documents and spend a lot of time and I commend your volunteerism. So thank you for that. Also like to thank staff and the consultant for all of the the years of work that they put into it at this point. We already provided written testimony to the record. What I just handed out is a copy of our written testimony. My comments tonight are going to be pretty short and mostly just we want to put a face to the letter that we already submitted and just reemphasize a couple of things. Really two things. First, a very specific and nuanced issue regarding irrigation districts and how they're described in the comprehensive plan. I think it could be improved and recognized that they are quasi municipal corporations and in fact, political subdivisions of the state of Colorado. Some of staff's comments already tonight have highlighted that issue and we have every reason to believe that that would be correct in the final draft. And then last really big picture thematic issue. C O I D's perspective is that there are some tweaks that can be made to the language throughout the comprehensive plan. We identified a lot of those areas in our written letter to really capture, you know, this collaborative spirit that is so important to resolving water issues in our community. It's not new. We have this collaborative spirit already. Lots of entities, including C O I D, including the county, regularly participate and work together on this collaboration. C O I D's main Uh, C O I D's main concern is that that collaborative spirit is not really, uh, noted in the current draft, and, uh, we would urge the, the Planning Commission of the county to work together to really capture that spirit and to ensure there's, uh, that spirit is engendered going forward. So that's it. Uh, mostly, uh, we have a lot of comments, so we'll let the, our written comments stand for themselves.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug White. My address is six oh, seven, six, two River Bend Drive. Um, I actually was not planning on testifying tonight until I saw staff's slide projection and on that slide that mentioned themes, it said, uh, Bridge Southwest Bend. And at the same breath, this is not amending or having anything to do with Goal Five, this comp plan update. I just wanted to remind the planning commission that we all know exactly where this bridge is being discussed. It's been discussed for years by Ben Park and Recreation. That section of the Deschutes River is designated as a wild, a federal wild and scenic river, and is designated a state scenic waterway under Goal Five. So not amending Goal Five and having, uh, a bridge in Southwest Bend. Actually, it's just outside the urban growth boundary of Bend into Chutes River Woods in a rural residential zone outside the urban growth boundary. So I just wanted to make a point that, uh, for an unamending Goal Five, then maybe that, that theme, which was the first one on that list, should be eliminated or at least made clear that we're not going to visit bridges in a wild scenic river. That's all I have to, uh, provide. Thank you.
Thanks. Is it clarifying question? Okay, so just to clarify what a clarifying, clarifying question is, just so everyone knows. Um, a clarifying question is when you are confused about someone's testimony, you genuinely do not know what they are saying, and you would like to understand better. Is that type of question?
I was just gonna ask if he's supporting or opposing the bridge.
Great question. Um, can you sit at the mics or, thank you for coming all the way back up. Sorry about that.
Yeah, this is Doug White again. Yeah, I was involved with both, uh, State, uh, Park and Recreation and, uh, Ben Park and Recreation's, uh, uh, Citizen Committee Groups. And obviously Ben Parks Group, uh, did a straw vote and got support of the bridge. Uh, Ben Parks or, uh, excuse me, Oregon State Park and Rec, which administers the state scenic waterway, was not interested in amending the administrative rule that currently prohibits pedestrian crossing, crossings at that particular location. So like I said, I kind of thought that thing was put to bed. Uh, I researched the legislative websites, didn't see any statutes, could be wrong, but didn't see any statutes amending or directing the park commission to amend administrative rule dealing with bridge crossings on the upper Deschutes. So, uh, I hope that helps. So I'm definitely opposed. I've been opposed to the bridge since basically moved out there.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Sure.
Okay, so at this time I have not received any more blue sheets. Are there people in, um, person here tonight who would like to provide a comment on the plan? Okay, so seeing none, you can, well, I'll circle back around to you all in case you change your minds. Um, but let's look and see, um, who's got their Zoom hands raised, and then I'm seeing it. Oh, oh, that's a one, not a pause. I thought that's a hold on. Okay, there is a Zoom hand raised, so if you can go ahead and elevate, uh, um, participant to a panelist, then we can hear their testimony. Looks like we've got Doreen Ty elevated to a panelist, and Doreen, if you can unmute yourself, there we go.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Doreen Ty, sixty-four, six-five Palbeet Highway, Bend, Oregon. Um, I, I wanted to, uh, support keeping the record open for further comments. Um, I wanted to commend you on your twenty forty process. If, if you saw nothing through the process, our community wants to be involved. And I'd like to see this approach on other big projects that really affect large parts of our community. Um, I, I have concern about the timing of, you know, there's been thousands of pages released in the last couple of months between the airports and this project and the transportation plan, and it, it makes it really hard for a community to stay in the know and on top of it when all this is rolled out in a couple of months. So that, that would be something I'd like to see somehow, you know, timing addressed a little better. Um, replicate, uh, sorry, I'm reading through my notes here. Um, so you saw there was a large community input, and I'd like to see that out of the projects. You know, these other projects are supposed to be three-part. You know, according to Goal One, where there's planning and development, which is community involvement, adoption, and then implementation, and planning in the developing part throughout the county, you know, whether it be wildlife, or whether it be water, or whether it be airports or a motocross track is not getting its fair share of the three parts. And, uh, the community is being treated more as a pain in the butt rather than as a resource, and that needs to change. And how do we get locals to have as much voice as non-local developers and their dollars so that we can protect the place that we live? Um, the community just needs a lot more voice weight. Um, I agree with, you know, just about everybody that's spoken so far. We need to be protecting our open spaces and lands. We need, uh, better utilization of urban land, not sprawl. Rezoning can only lead to sprawl, so even non-productive farms still have a tremendous amount of use, as you've already heard by one of the speakers tonight. Um, protect, so basically, just protection of sus- sustainability, including natural resources, human health, wildlife and fossil fuel impacts must be a priority, not an afterthought. We need to have that real solid in our, in our goals and in our master plan to protect our people and the place we all live and call home. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We have other Zoom participants raising their hands. Okay. Um, let's, let's give them a few minutes in case people are looking for their Zoom hand and frantically clicking around and just go back to the room for a second. Um, I know quite a few of you have already provided some testimony. Um, I will be planning to encourage the team here to keep the record open. We'll see what we vote, but um, you may get another opportunity, but you're here now, so if anyone has anything they'd like to say, come on up. Okay, um, and then anyone on Zoom raising? Okay, so I think we can then move on to our decision-making, um, process here. So, um, at this point, we have several options. We can, um, continue the hearing to date certain. Uh, we can close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date certain, or we can close the hearing and commence deliberations. And I'm gonna pause that question to you all, because we just had a couple gentlemen walk in and hello, everyone. Um, uh, do you guys want to provide any public comment tonight? Okay, you're here to listen. Great. Um, so given those three options, um, I'll entertain a motion regarding what to do with the record.
Adam Chair.
Commissioner Cyrus.
I move to continue the hearing through our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to continue the hearing through our next meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Sure, I just, although we didn't have a big group of people here tonight, I personally have heard comments from citizens in the community, as well as there's a number of comments on the record, um, that this is a large body of information and number of people would like to further digest it and, uh, have an opportunity to participate in two weeks uh, with their comments.
Okay, is there other debate? Okay.
Just to, yeah. Clarification, um, would the maker of the motion, uh, be, um, amenable to specifying the date as well? You said our next meeting, would you? Give it a date certain, November nine? I think it's November nine.
Correct, November ninth.
That would be fine.
Great idea. Um, and the seconder is amenable to that as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. So now our motion reads continue the hearing to date certain through our next meeting on November ninth.
And one more point of clarification, if I can.
Yes, please.
Um, I, I believe Commissioner Cyrus, you deliberately said the hearing, so that's written in oral, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments, clarifications, or discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Um, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Cyrus?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffcamp?
Aye.
Commissioner Alman?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Trobridge?
Aye.
Um, and who are we missing other than me? No, he's, he voted aye. Oh. Okay, I guess I just wrote the wrong tallies down. I'll also vote yes, so it is unanimous um, that we will continue the hearing through our next meeting on November ninth. And that for, um, clarification includes both the oral hearing, so we'll have another hearing like this on November ninth, but also written comments. So please submit your written comments to our staff, and we will be reading those as they come in. Great. Excellent. Okay, so we'll now continue to our next item on the agenda, which is continued deliberations, Tumalo Community Plan Update, twenty twenty to twenty forty. So for this item, I'm going to turn it over to Peter Russell and Tarek Rawlings, our senior transportation planners.
Commissioner? Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, and we'll now take a five-minute break, uh, upon request. It's always available upon request. It doesn't require a vote.
I'm gonna see if I can get some. Chair's discretion.
Oh, nice.
Which one?
I think it's basically. Yeah, right, yeah, that's perfect. They're just gonna be like, I don't know. Beautiful to the steep rose comment, as is the chair's discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, I wrote. No, this was, this, the whole packet was.
Oh, brown elbow.
First part of it was the compliment and the second.
Cyrus.
That part.
While we're waiting for Commissioner Cyrus, uh, we had a request to put page 148 of your packet up on the screen. A summary of the bulletin list of items in the Tumalo Community Plan, so.
Okay, thank you.
Tarek, if you need this back, I could read off.
No, I can.
Okay.
Look on my.
Okay, thank you.
No. Okay. Alright. So we're ready to resume? It's now 6:38, so let's go ahead and resume. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Tarek Rawlings and Peter Russell. Our senior transportation planners.
Just trying to find our, uh, packet here.
Yeah.
And it'll be, um, kind of the same. View as before, but here, let's just see if this one comes up on the screen for you. Should be a bulleted list, yeah, and a public input summary there, so. Uh, yeah, just let us know kind of how that looks.
Oh, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Um, so if you do need, I can, yeah, we'll just kind of keep this up for the review of the commission, but yeah, just for the record, Tarek Rawling, Senior Transportation Planner with the Community Development Department. Um, and to, to my right, I'll let him introduce himself.
Hey, Russell, Senior Transportation Planner.
Uh, yeah, and before the commission again, um, today is a continued deliberation process for the Tumalo Community Plans update for 2020 to 2040. Um, this is continued from the October 12th, original day where we first began, um, deliberations, so we're just continuing on with the same process. We, what we have here is a memo and some attachments there that are in your packet, so we'll have, they're the same as the last time we deliberated. They show um, kind of a color code of the changes from the previous, uh, plan to now. It shows, um, also just an exhaustive list of if something was added or deleted or modified. Um, then there's also, uh, this, this memo basically capturing the process so far, and then on page 148 that we have up on the screen here for you, there's a bulleted list with several issue areas that came out of public input. Um, it's not an exhaustive list. You are certainly welcome to, um, deliberate on whatever matters you found in record, reviewing record. Um, but we're here more or less just to, uh, bring your attention to some of these, uh, public input themes that you're seeing here bulleted. And really, we're just, we're both here available for questions as you move through the deliberation process.
And then the goal for tonight would be for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on whether to accept the Tumalo Community Plan 2040 as proposed with amendments that you may have suggested vote upon. Or you can always have the, the no button option, or you can say, no, we recommend the board not adopt it. So those are kind of your three options. Adopt as presented, adopt as amended. Um, do not adopt as presented. And then what will happen next is staff will work with the Board of County Commissioners, we'll have a work session with the board summarizing the planning commission process, the public process that preceded the planning commission, and then we'll set a public hearing before the board. We shall be open for public comments.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions for our staff? Okay, so, um, great suggestion, whoever made it to put the slide up here with the public comment, public input summary. So, um, as you look through the summary and hopefully you've taken the time to, um, think about what you may want to recommend for this plan, um. But I think we should go through this similarly to how we went through our last deliberations with, um, you know, people kind of picking out things from public input, or perhaps things that weren't represented by the public that you have an opinion about. Um, ideas that might be helpful to add to the plan. Uh, go ahead and make a motion regarding that, and then we can debate that, and maybe we'll end up with a list of issues similarly to what we had for the Transportation System Plan. Um, followed by a general motion about recommending the plan with the following amendments. Basically, same process as last time.
I would have a comment. A few of these seem to apply more to the transportation plan. And should probably be addressed at that point. Uh, or as part of that public hearing, um, uh, things with, uh, the speeding or, uh, transit stop locations. I just, I think that's more of a, a transportation thing.
Yeah, let me, uh, refer that to staff. What do you guys think would be helpful in terms of recommendations?
Uh, I mean, my brief piece is that you, you certainly could, you know, have us direct sort of those comments into the TSP, but there are sections in the drafted TCP plan already that, that do relate to roads and, um, vehicular travel. I'll figure it out on that.
Yeah, I mean, Tarek's got a good point. Um, the, the previous Tumalo Community Plan, I think it was a mini, mini comp plan. So it's for a defined geographic area, so it has land use policies, economic development policies, transportation policies related to ODOTs. That's why we have those. If you think those live better in the, um, TSP, we could do that, but we also have a Terrebonne Community Plan, which followed a similar format. We had a transportation element in it, so then we'd have to figure out, um, what do we do with that? So the idea, these were kind of self-contained, um, plans in response to public sentiment, so that's why we, we had them in here. Um, but it's certainly the Planning Commission's discretion to recommend either take all, anything that's transportation-related and roll it into the larger TSP. That's fine. It's up to you, um, what, what you all prefer.
No.
Okay. Um, so would anyone like to make a motion regarding the plan in general, or any of, any of these other issues that have been raised, or issues that you yourself have, um, want to raise?
Are we still talking about transportation? Um, or is that gone?
Oh, we're moving on. Whatever you want. It could be transportation-related or not.
Okay, um, if we're gonna move on from transportation, then.
I mean, it could.
There's a lot of things I would.
Yeah.
But I'll start with the, I, I over. Do I make a motion to? I make a motion to remove, and please help me, y'all. To remove the, um, Ben Parks and Rec, where was that? District from the, from the community plan. It sounded alike. Okay, then I don't say anything, and then you ask me later.
You're totally getting this. Okay. So you're, you're saying you want to make a motion to remove the Ben Parks and Rec district from the plan? Okay, um, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that we remove the Ben Parks and Rec district from the plan. Um, is there any debate on the motion? Um, Kelsey is the maker of the motion, so Commissioner Kelly rather. So you get to go first, and you were actually about to say why you made the motion, so now is a good time to say that.
Okay, well, I just remember, um, uh, there was quite a fit, quite a few people who did not want to be brought into the Parks District. Um, I think the idea was, hey, if we bring in, it come on to the Parks District, maybe we can improve some of these, uh, waterway input and takeouts, and we could make it maybe, um, easier for people to park, or it's safer, or there's, you know, we deal with sanitation issues, but a lot of people then were saying, no, if you build it, that kind of the idea, if you build it, they will come, and a lot of people were trying to, you know, minimize the, uh, excessive use of, of those areas. And so the need for enhancing those possible park ideas, uh, we're, we're just not encouraged. And also, I think the increase in, um, taxes that go along with the parks were, uh, not favorable.
Okay, um, is there any debate on the, on the motion that's actually against the motion? Before we go to other comments and support?
Well.
Mayor Sher Hope Camp?
I, I need to, uh, w- 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 rather, whether foe or con, I need to upfront, uh, disclose that I am the Chair of the Board for Ben Park and Recreation District. And I tend, I, I will, uh, I intend to, uh, abstain from this vote. Um, it's a larger community plan, of course, so I, you know, I, I do intend to participate in the rest of this consideration, but on this particular motion, I'll abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Uh, Peter?
Can I offer, just if I'm Madam Chair, for the record, Peter Gatazki, Community Development Director, on, and I'm looking to our team, just for, to Commissioner Kelly's motion, um, on page, uh, 24 of the community plan, it speaks to the recreational trails that follow the Deschutes River, go through Riley Ranch, and come or come, and, and basically intersect uh, imperfectly into Tumalo. Um, and I think that's, and then there's also articulation about ODOT's investments for pedestrian and bicycle, uh, connectivity into the community. Uh, so, uh, there is, there, there is a kind of, under existing conditions, a reference to that interrelationship. Um, and just, just for clarity, is, is your motion to remove all references, or it's, it's more to a, a, a policy, uh, that would be, uh, that would speak to the issues that you just recognize that there's, there's a, there's a reluctance or a hesitation, or whatever the right terminology is to, uh, preclude being included into the park district. And so I just, what I heard originally, Madam Chair, to the, to the Planning Commission, was that there was a kind of a broad strikeout, and I just wanted more than, without inserting myself into the deliberations, I just wanted to let you know that on page 24 and 25, it speaks to those interrelationships.
Yeah, I think what I was referencing is, is, um, number 11.
Okay.
Here, and it says, explore whether the county should form Parks and Rec District, Parks and Recreation District as part of the County's Comprehensive Plan Update.
Thank you.
And I.
I think that helps.
Is that?
I think that helps staff and, and, and your colleagues on, on the dice.
Well, it, it, there, I think we need a little further clarification, because my understanding of that number 11 was, um, should the county develop a Parks and Rec District? And versus should we not have Ben Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
But maybe Tarek and Peter can clarify, because I don't know that my interpretation is actually correct. I, that's just what I.
Uh, for 11?
Yeah.
Yeah. Number 10, I think, is the one you're actually talking about, which 10 says, Assistant Outreach to Oregon State Parks Department or Municipal Parks and Recreation Districts to explore the annexation of Tumalo into an existing district. Um, assess opportunities for access and parking improvements at heavily used river access points. So the first part of 10 is when it talks about going into an existing park district.
You're right, thank you.
The one that you gets the closest to what you were wanting to accomplish.
Yes, then what, can you read number 11? Because I don't have it pulled up.
Number 11 is explore whether the county should form a Parks and Recreation District as part of the County's Comprehensive Plan Update. So 10 is, do you go into an existing, uh, either State Park District or Municipal Park and Recreation District? And 11 is, does the county explore whether it should have its own park and rec district?
Okay, so you're saying that your, your motion is basically that you, you don't want to get annexed into an existing parks and rec districts?
Yeah, that's what I was reading, you know, that's a lot of the feedback I.
Yeah, so that's, members of the public clearly, um, sort of interpreted that as the Ben Parks and Rec one specifically, and are you, um, making your motion only regarding the Ben and Parks Rec District, or do you want to amend your motion to say, um, don't get annexed into any Parks and Rec District?
Are there other Parks and Rec districts that we could be annexed into?
Probably not. I mean, theoretically.
Theoretically, the reason we said other districts is because Tumalo Schools and the Redmond School didn't. So, again, it'd be a huge geographic leap for Redmond Park and Rec to come down to Tumalo, but just to kind of cover all bases, we, we said that, so.
I would, yeah, then I would think that all, you know, that's how my interpretation would be, was that be any.
Any current.
Any current.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, um, don't, or avoid, maybe of, no, um.
Or just swipe that from the plan.
Strike number 10.
Delete 10.
Delete.
I think just as a quick note, it might be helpful if we, if we are talking about actual line item policies to sort of just like reference the number or that, so we can know whether it's, and if you're, especially if it's just like remove, or, or change, or edit, you know, always just.
Okay. I, I think that sounds great, yeah.
Maybe I'd even further go as far as saying delete 10 and 11. Renee, with community partners.
So, yeah, I think, are you saying you want to do, that's what you want to amend your?
And I apologize, I'm kind of stumbling through this.
You're doing fine. Seriously, it's a kind of a clumsy thing, and even no matter how many times you do it, it's still kind of clumsy, so. Like, it's more important that you get your ideas out here than it is to make this, like, pretty. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not pretty. I'm really excited about.
It's pretty enough.
Okay, I'm really excited, I'm in, what excited me was when the, um, and I'm speaking, I may be out of turn, but I'm just, you know, stream of consciousness here, was when we had the Lauren coming here with the beautification of Tumalo, and when it says number 12, coordinate with community partners on efforts to designate new parks and maintain local parks. Um, I think that should be left in because I feel like that would be the perfect, you know.
Need to finish the motion on the table.
Would be the perfect, so I'm just kind of explaining my, since I am defending my thing, I'm explaining why I think that it should become from the community partners and not a district parks.
Hmm, that makes sense. Okay, let's get our motion, um, exactly articulated and, um, make sure it's amendable to our second. Um, so now our motion really reads, delete number 10 and 11 from the plan. And just so everyone knows, 10 is Assistant Outreach to Oregon State Parks Department or Municipal Parks and Recreation Districts to explore the annexation of Tumalo into an existing district. Assess opportunities for access and parking improvements at heavily used over access points. And 11 reads, explore whether the county should form a Parks and Rec District as part of the County's Comprehensive Plan Update. So is that?
Good with that.
Okay, cool. Um, so now, um, Co- Commissioner Kelly, you were explaining your rationale for this motion. Do you have other things you'd like to say before I ask for other?
I've said enough.
Okay, are you sure? Well, you can, we'll come back to you.
Said enough of anything else.
Okay, um, other comments, Commissioner Williams?
The concern I have about striking 11 is the county is much more than just possibly, uh, having parks and wrecks in Tumalo. There is a lot of other, and then too, the majority of county land is not county-owned. So exploring making a countywide Parks and Rec to me is totally different than annexing Tumalo into an existing Parks Department. And I would not necessarily be in favor of striking 11. It's not the end of the world, but I, I think that is something for consideration.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, I, as I read it, this is the Tumalo Plan. So everything in this is directly related to Tumalo only. And I, I think it would address your concern, because I don't think it would prevent the county from taking a look at a countywide plan. It just would, would prohibit the county from doing a county park and rec within Tumalo. As an alternative to, I read it as, as, as an alternative to number 10. It would just, it wouldn't preclude the county from doing a countywide park and rec.
Let's ask our staff. Is, is Commissioner Cyrus correct in his understanding?
Get it right.
I'm not sure how, how the county would go about park district formation.
I think we have a lawyer present.
Don't put me on the spot.
I don't think we have a Parks Department currently, right, and.
So, so the backstory is, we've heard from across the county, we own large parcels, we usually get through foreclosure, and people recreate on them, so there's always been a request for a park and recreation department. Um, if you didn't have one, um, you could still, if you took out 11, it doesn't preclude the county from forming a countywide Park and Recreation District. It would make it somewhat difficult to have that Park and Recreation District manage lands within Tumalo, um, based on the, you know, the, the plan being moot on it, but that'd be something that first you have to form a Park and Recreation District, and certainly, you know, further discussion of its affected properties and whatnot at that point. So, um, long story, if you take out 11, I think you can still have a countywide Park and Rec District form later on if the county so chooses.
Um, that's, that's a helpful clarify.
Yeah, can I amend mine?
Um, well, think, consider this before you amend it. Um, your sentiment sounded like it was sort of like, hey, let's keep it local with our parks and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and so if the county were to form a Parks and Rec District as a countywide thing, would you want it to be managing county lands in Tumalo, or would you want those to be more not managed by the county?
I think that saying that no, never is a harsh, is a harsh statement. So that's what's, that's why I'm second guessing.
Well, if we were to take 11 out of the plan, it just wouldn't be in the plan. It doesn't, it wouldn't, you're not proposing to change it to no, never, you're just proposing to take it out of the plan so that it doesn't say that at all anymore, and the new number 11 would be the current number 12. So it would just be sort of like not mentioning the possibility of a county, so actually would just leave it open for whatever. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Commissioner Altman?
Um, thank you, Chair. So my question, um, I don't know if we can actually have discussion, or I, I would refer to the maker of the motion. So, um, if we take out 11 and we don't explore whether the county should form a Parks and Recreation District, and if Commissioner Kelly is in favor of coordinating with community partners to designate new parks and maintain local parks, my question is, where does that funding come from? If the county has a Parks and Recreation District that would serve Tumalo, um, I assume that would come out of the county's budget, whereas who's going to pay for community partners to designate new parks and maintain the parks?
State.
State.
Um, there's other park organizations, for example, State Parks and Rec. In fact, I mean, it wouldn't be out of the question for the state to do parks in that area.
Or maybe Friends of the Park.
Like a nonprofit kind of, I'm, I'm imagining kind of as a nonprofit, um, you know, community kind of coalition that raised money for a porta potty or a.
Mm-hmm. Hmm. Yeah, or I think you, like Lauren's group with the art.
Yeah.
If there was a similar group that wanted to do a park.
It would come within the commu- with, from within the community, not from outside the community. So I imagine, there once was a, a porta potty down there at this one, uh, River Takeout. Um, and, you know, to be honest, I don't know who paid for it. But at one point, there was a porta potty down there.
If, if memory serves, I think that the board, uh, funded the porta potty, I don't know which, I don't think it was Planning Department, it might have been Property Management, but I know the board was involved in the establishment for either one or two summers, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Porta potty there by the swimming hole.
Yeah.
Okay, well, my only comment, I think, is that it, I, I think the residents of Tumalo, um, well, I'll say many of the residents of Tumalo seem to favor a local kind of a very local approach, and a very, very much like, uh, let's define our community um, rather than having, um, outside groups do things in the community, so I, I think it's a good idea. Um, uh, Commissioner Trobridge, do you have any comments or opposed or in favor or neutral comments?
Uh, not really. It sounds like, uh, I understand not wanting to get Ben Park and Wrecks involved in Tumalo. It's out, outside of the city anyway, and I know they do have things. It's out of, outside of the city anyway. And I know they do have things outside of city limits, but. No, I really don't have a whole, a whole lot of opinion on that one. I think I'd agree with. Let Tumalo control their destiny with regards to that.
Okay. Um, is there further debate on the motion before we go to a vote? Okay, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cyrus?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Hope Camp.
Staying.
Um, Commissioner Altman?
Um, I'm gonna vote no.
Uh, Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Trobridge?
Aye.
Okay. And I'm also going to vote yes. So that's going to be, um, uh, the motion passes to delete number 10 and 11 from the plan. Uh, five in favor and one abstaining. I'm sorry. Oh, this is what happens when I don't write out the full thing. Five in favor, one abstaining and one no. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so now we can go to another motion. Um, regarding anything about the plan.
Should I keep going?
You should. Yes.
And by the end of tonight, maybe I'll have it down. I. I, I wrote, and I wrote this down. I wrote, I, um. This has to do with, uh, combining like, here's how I read it. If slash when sewer comes to Tumalo, then review development code to potentially limit multifamily units. Over three, multifamily over three units.
If sewer comes to Tumalo, sorry, say the last part again.
And Steph, maybe you could help me if I'm, if I'm speaking incorrectly.
Uh, no, I thought it was.
Then review development code. To potentially limit multifamily over three units.
Will, I see you coming to the stand here.
Good evening, your.
Where we are.
Planning manager.
Which section?
I'm sorry. Can you reference, um, a number in the plan so that we can follow along? Um.
One of them would be this bullet point down here. Where it says, um, support for alternating the Tumalo to U C code to limit multifamily dwellings. The maximum, like currently as, as it sits right now. Because of sewer limitations, we can't have these multi-unit. You know, developments.
One moment.
Yeah.
Um, so let's do this process wise. Let's get the wording of the motion good. And then let's get a second to it. And then we should hear what you're about to say. Um, is this a good wording or okay enough wording, Will?
If I may, uh, your planning manager, Will Groves. Um, so I, I recognize that we heard some community sentiment, sentiment about concerns about multifamily housing and potential of. Uh, of that, you know, being, uh, more likely should sewer come to Tumalo. And so I recognize the issue that's, uh, I think I understand while the issue that's being raised. Now, the question is, um, how that might, uh, evolve into a policy if you were looking to implement that. And so I see that there's a concern that, um, you know, right now it's not practical, of course, to have multifamily housing because of septic limitations that sewer would change that. Um, you know, one of the difficulties of timing it to the arrival of sewer is that, you know, maybe already too late at that point, you know, for the community. If, you know, by the, and in some ways sewer is already there, you know, there's, there's significant portions of, you know, uh, the community that have received some sort of sewer service. So the, the timing aspect in terms of writing it is a little bit difficult. Um, it might be, and at your discretion and as a suggestion, it might be, you know, that you're effectively as a policy. Um, exploring, uh, as a, exploring, uh, legislative changes to preclude. Uh, multifamily housing in Tumalo beyond, you know, three unit developments. Um, you know, right now they're effectively precluded because of the septic and then sewer is already here incoming potentially. So. It, and that, um, that would set off, that would set off a goal, a policy and a goal to. Then put the board on alert, like this is something the community wants. There's other ways to get at that. And I don't know if, uh, Peter has any suggestions on language, but, um, that would, that would be enough, I think, to carry it forward would be a. A recommendation to, uh, explore legislative changes to the zoning code to limit multifamily housing to three units in the Tumalo.
So you're, you're kind of saying, just take out the part about tying it to sewer because.
It, yeah.
Thank you. Cause that's exactly what, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I, that was exactly what I just heard over and over and over, reading public comments and testimony.
Yeah. Um, so can you, uh, change the wording of your motion?
Well, help me please. Okay. Explore, I, I was writing it down, but you were.
A motion to, uh, add a policy to explore legislative changes to limit multifamily housing to three units in Tumalo.
Okay, so, um, the motion reads, um, explore legislative changes to limit multifamily housing to three units in Tumalo. Um, is there a second to this? Well, I'll second it then, if no one's going to second it because it came up so often that we should discuss it. Um, so, um, let's hear some debate on this motion.
Uh, over and over, I kept hearing the want, the need, the desire to keep a small town community feel. Um, and I do feel that. You know, that feel would cha- that would change if we had apartment complexes or large housing developments. In a community that. Uh, identifies as a rural, um, a rural community. And I just think that, uh, community that identifies and wants to be, um, live as a small town. It just conflicts that to have the. Larger, um, multifamily units.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Uh, just a question, just from a strictly logistics standpoint. Um, I'm thinking like a duplex type unit. Comes in factors of two as opposed to three. I was just thinking from a construction standpoint of a. Limit of three is actually a practical unit or size or design, et cetera, versus four.
Baff? Do you have a, three kept coming up and I don't know why three kept coming up in comments and, and why is three?
Things in the, kind of in three different categories, one too many. And so, you know, you're a single family dwelling, you're a duplex or you're some un, unnumbered units that are agglomerated together. So that's why three comes up is because it's not a single family dwelling. It's not a duplex. So, you know, you reasonably could. Suggest that the cutoff be at duplexes. Or you could be like, yes, you can as a conditional use, um, come in for multi-family hu- housing, but they come in. Chunks of three as opposed to in chunks of, you know, 50.
Interesting.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cyrus.
I would move to amend this motion to change the word three to four.
Okay, is there a second to amend the motion to change it from three to four?
I would second.
Okay, um. Is there any debate on the motion to amend it from three to four?
Sure. Um, mostly just from a, uh, I am a general contractor. And what I, although I haven't built any of these type of units, uh, I do primarily excavation work. But it's been my observation that most of the duplexes that I've seen actually are four units to a building. Because it's practical, functional and more efficient to build. And so that was why I was going to suggest four, because that typically is a single building.
Okay. Is anyone opposed to amending the motion from three units to four units?
No, I'm curious to see what Peter Russell has to say.
Um, Peter Russell would like to make a friendly suggestion in that. When you, whatever you decide on this, could you please make it land use policy number five? And it's a new policy and rather than trying to shoehorn it into the public facilities, I think, I know what you're trying to get at, but it seems to make more sense. If you're getting at land use, you're just making a new land use policy, which obviously has public facilities implications, but you get to where you want to go, which is just kind of cleaner.
Okay, so you're just saying, make this a separate policy number, not trying to change a policy number in the plan.
Well, I'm just saying it'd be a new policy. I'm just saying, so if you vote to adopt this, just, just make it land use policy five.
Okay.
It'd be easier than all of us.
Okay, great. I'm sure we can do that.
I am not, I am, um, supportive of the, of four instead of three.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and proceed to vote then on the motion or the motion to amend the motion from three to four units. Uh, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cyrus? Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Trobridge?
Um, I actually had a question. Um.
I'm so sorry. I did not, so your screen is not, I, I like, your image is not you, so I can't tell if you're raising your hand or not.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I just was waiting for, for a gap. One of my quick question is, and I, I was going to look it up here real quick, but it might take me a minute. Um. So all of this is, is hypothetical in the event that city sewer or public sewer arrives in Tumalo. What, eh, in its current state, what zoning, let's pretend that there's sewer there. What would the zoning allow right now in Tumalo? Cause what, I don't know what the zoning is.
Yeah. So a couple of things, um, we did change the motion so that it's not actually dependent on sewer. Um, it would, we, we took that part out. So the current. And, and, and also right now we're voting on the amendment to change. It from three to four units. So if.
I, I get that. I total, yes, I understand that, but what we're also, and without knowing what the zoning is now, we're essentially voting to change the zoning of the town potentially, right?
Right, right now, we're actually just voting on the amendment to change the motion from three to four. Once we finish that, that process, we can now then talk more about the original motion, which has to do with. What's allowed in that zone. And then I think we should get to that question, but right now we're just. Um, debating and voting on whether or not we should amend our motion.
Okay, and this just has to do with apartment buildings, not say like a tiny home cluster or something like that.
Um, so it just would, like, if we pass this amendment, the motion would read. Explore legisla- legislative changes to limit multifamily units, um, to four units in Tumalo. So that, like, if you vote yes, then you want the motion to read that. If you vote no, then you want the motion to read the same exact thing, only three units instead of four units.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, um, just to, just to make this a little easier, would you rather have it be, say, three units or four units, just for right now?
Yeah, I just think it's. I, I don't think it really matters at this point without knowing what the zoning actually is in there.
So you could abstain or you could vote yes, or you could vote no.
I guess I'll abstain because I don't have enough information to make an educated vote on this. This is just tossing it out there without knowing all the, the facts of the zoning in that area. That's all. So I guess I'll abstain.
Okay, and then I'll vote yes. So our motion to amend the motion. Um, from three to four units is passed, six in favor with one abstaining. So. Just to get everyone on the same page now, our motion reads. Explore legislative changes to limit multifamily housing to, to four units in Tumalo. And so I think Commissioner Trobridge has a good question about, um, what does the current zoning allow for? So maybe I will turn it over to staff to respond to that question.
Yeah, thank you again, uh, Will Groves, your planning manager. So, um, in the, in Tumalo zoning, it varies a little bit by zone. Some zones are limited to single family dwellings, but the Tumalo Residential District, for example, allows outright, uh, single family dwellings and duplexes. And as a, well, they call it a two family dwelling. And as a conditional use, there's a male, multifamily dwelling complex is the allowed use. A multifamily dwelling complex is a, a building or portion thereof designed for occupancy by three or more families living independently of each other. So basically, you know, if you're, if you're in one box and there are, and there's one family living in there, that's a single family dwelling. If there are two families living in there independently of each other, so typically a duplex type scenario. As soon as you put the third family in there with a firewall between them, that then becomes a multifamily dwelling. And those multifamily dwelling units could then, within a single structure, have any, any number between, as a condition to use, any number between three and poten- you know, an unlimited number. Of, uh, of residents. And so what you can see, of course, I'm, I'm sure you're all familiar with, you know, apartment complexes and that you'll see, you know, uh. You've seen certainly ones going up around here in Bend where there might be 30 units in a single, under a single roof line. You know, where there's an upstairs and the downstairs and they're all laid out. So under the motion that you would have, someone could still apply for the conditional use multifamily housing. Or, uh, yeah, multifamily dwelling complex. But when they came in, if they said, we would like to put five families in this building, the answer would be no, four is the limit. And so that would have an effective limit on the density that could be achieved under that. Um, so you know, under the kind of the current scenario, if sewer came in. With, under the constraints of parking and landscaping, things like that, you could build something that was 30 feet high and is, you know, as big as the lot would allow. And under this scenario, it would limit the density that would be allowed per legal lot to four units per legal lot. Um, and right now, the, the, right now it's uncapped. It's just, it's practically limited by the, by, uh, the septic limitations in Tumalo.
That was a great answer. Um, Commissioner Trobridge, does that answer your question? Do you feel like that gets at that? Okay, so, um, let's see. I think we now should continue our debate on, um, exploring the legislative changes to limit multifamily housing to four units in Tumalo. Um. I'm just, yeah, are you want, you want to, you want to vote? I actually wa- would like to hear a little bit more about, um, I don't know, like. I think there are a couple of good arguments to make for, against the motion, um. And if no one else is going to throw them out there, I think I'll throw them out there just for the sake of, um. Just the sake of a healthy debate, um, so. Uh, Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Take a stab at this. Um. Um, so on my mind is the larger context of statewide imperative for more housing. And.
Don't forget to speak in the mic.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Um, from the governor to the legislature. Um, for statewide interests and then down to, uh, the localities in, in Bend is certainly foremost amongst them. Um. Uh, as opposed to the clearly expressed, um, you know, uh, sentiment from the record. Uh, that, uh, Commissioner Kelly has rightly articulated that Tumalo wants to stay Tumalo. And, um, that would be a big, big change, um, in the look and feel, uh, for Tumalo to have. Uh, if, if, if I can extend the, by extension, the motion, you know, apartment buildings, basically. Um. Uh, I would, I would note that, um, there is a very, very widespread sentiment in Bend. I'm not going to characterize it as majority or minority. I'll just say it's significant. That, uh, folks that don't like the changes that's been happening in Bend, uh, for the past, uh, let's say 10 years or so with the extraordinary. Uh, expansion of apartments and, um. Anyway, um, I, I struggle with this. Um. I, I, I kind of wish that we had had these kinds of discussions in regards to direction of Bend, uh, 10 years ago. Um. Yeah, so I'm not really, um, stating a position on it. I, I completely respect the motion. Um, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about it in the context of a larger statewide imperative for more housing. Um, in other contexts, I've pushed back against that imperative and I don't, I don't like the term crisis. I don't like crisis thinking. I don't like depicting a particular agenda that you're in favor of as a crisis. A housing crisis or otherwise, that we have some challenges with affordability and, and housing people sufficiently. But. Anyway, those are my thoughts. I'm sorry to go on about that.
You, you didn't go on. That was great. Um. Other debate?
Sure.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, I'd like to express my sympathy to the folks in Tumalo who would like to keep Tumalo, Tumalo. Um, I guess, you know, granted, I, I suggest or. Made the motion to increase it from three to four, simply from a expediency standpoint. But I certainly appreciate an experience, um, uh, where they're coming from. With regard to concerns over an apartment complex that could take the, almost the entire footprint of a lot and could have 30, 40 units in it. And the change that would recreate within the ci- the, the community of Tumalo. I mean, it's certainly made a huge impact in Sisters in both look and feel, the community, when you add. add that many more people, simply because you can pack them in like sardines, and so, no, I fully support this motion.
Um, I'll add one other thing that sways me in favor of support of the motion despite, I think, that the arguments against it are also pretty sound arguments, um, I, I think yeah, that the residents of Tamlo, Tamlo are really concerned about the sewer and some, I should say, some of the residents of the Tamlo are really concerned about sewer, there are some people in Tamlo who would like a sewer. Um, there is some, there are some really big issues with groundwater. Um, and one of the hard things about this process was helping people understand that we're not, we're not in charge of the sewer, and we don't have any say on the sewer. Um, and this item or one like it came up when we were talking about, okay, but what can we do if the concern is about limiting development and changing the overall sense of the community, so I, I just think that as a sewer eventually comes, or more, more sewer comes in one way or the other, one fashion or the other within there, it just would be really nice for people living in Tamlo to not have to fight with one another over just really huge amounts of development, um, and instead keep the, keep their community the way it is, I, I totally get that. I guess we could say that about any community at any time, but Tamlo is not a city. You know, it's, it's a really small community, so that's what makes it different than Bend or, or somewhere else for me. Okay.
Only I, mo- another comment here is the, the footprint that we're talking about in Tamlo is very small, if you wanna look at, you know, page nineteen, it's, it's really only I'm gonna guess like six square blocks, let's pretend, so it's actually a very small, and it's a very ecologically fragile area down there on the river. Um, so I think, so that's kind of where I'm coming, what my heart is saying is man, we just need to make sure that in some of these areas of our county that are more fragile or sensitive because of our water or natural resources, that those are the areas that we should focus more on limiting development and focus our I agree that development needs to happen, and it will happen in Tamlo, like, it's not like it's gonna stay the same, that's naive to say that, but to, um to, to try to limit it a little bit, um, to protect those natural resources, I think, uh, is important. Because we have to remember, it's not just sewer, it's water, that, we don't, we're not connected to, uh, municipal water down there. And we had testimony from the guy that is, I always get them all, TID maybe, uh, is that are, the, the person who supplies water, um, Leyla, I'm sorry, Leyla.
Yeah.
He, he already said that water is, is, is a problem, and that they hardly have the reserves to they have to maintain reserves for fighting fires, and they don't even, they hardly have those, so I don't even think that I just think it's a resource depleted area and to add, um, more development would be it's, i- it just makes sense to me.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Hope Camp?
So, um, I'm, I'm swayed and convinced by the excellent arguments of my colleagues, and, um, I do intend to support the motion. I just, once again, get a plug in, I wish we could turn the clock back to, uh, Bend, when I moved there, when it was thirty thousand people, and have a similar kind of conversation. Because there were a lot of people that wanted to keep Bend, Bend, um, and still do, um, but I do intend to support the motion. Um, you know, and I'm gonna carry this sentiment forward, uh, for the sake of consistency when we look at housing or, uh, measures before us that affect housing density in the rural areas, uh, because there are a lot of people in the county that wanna keep the county, the county. So, um, notwithstanding, uh, pressure for housing, so, um, anyway, yeah, thanks.
Okay, great, um. Other debate on the motion before we proceed to vote? Okay, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cyrus? Uh, Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll also vote yes, so it is unanimous, um, the commissioner is recommending the Board of County Commissioners explore legislative changes to limit multifamily housing to four units in Tamlo.
Land use five.
Land use number five. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Okay, um, are there other motions regarding our Tamlo community plan?
I'll keep going.
Good, good.
Um, we had Lauren from, I forget her organization, but she is doing art for, uh, the Roundabout in Tamlo. And I personally witnessed that she, she has been com- communication with ODOT and with other organizations to, to get approval for her, for her art, she even hosted multiple community events to, to vote, so I think there were, uh, let's say four, I could be mistaken, but call it four, um, people submitted uh, proposals, and I don't really know what the county involved, like, I think she asked the county for funding, I don't know if that's possible or not. But I think it reads here to support. I think, um, all we can do, I don't know, and I don't necessarily mean financially, but, um support her, her movement to, to bring the art to the Roundabout.
And can you reference that, is this in the public input summary?
It's here, um, the first bullet point there.
Yes, support for Roundabout Art and Funding on Highway Twenty, Cook Avenue Roundabout, do you want your motion to say that?
I would just like it to say, support for Roundabout Art on Highway Twenty and Cook Roundabout.
So, okay, striking the, the funding part.
I don't know, I don't know if there's a, I don't.
We ask for advice from staff?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a mandate that says that we have supportive funding, but I don't know if that's the county's role, I feel like that should be community funded.
I, I, this is an aspiration, sorry, Madam Chair, you, I think you were pointing to me, uh, so I took that, uh, kind of the turning.
I was, I didn't realize Commissioner Kelly was, um, not fini- quite finished yet, so sorry, that was my bad.
Uh, so, anyway, sorry for that, uh, interruption, um. I, I certainly, you, you can have aspirational policies, um. And, and it's in the plan, and, you know, this is a land use policy plan, this, this plan deals with land use policy primarily, right? It has interfaces with transportation, public facilities. But, um, I mean, it, it, it could also be a natural reason or open space, but I think it's really a conversation with the planning commissioners, if you wanna support not just the importance of art and, and the, and, and, and funding, uh, you know, it doesn't I don't think that policy as presently written and shown on the screen beholds Deschutes County to, to resolve uh, you know, and adjudicate who's funding this effort, I think what it, what it could do is just say, i- i- it's a policy that, that speaks to the importance of doing both. Um, so, I, I don't think it ties or binds our, our, uh, or, or our department or the organization at large.
Okay.
Adam Chair.
Commissioner Cyrus, we're, we're still working on the wording of the motion.
Oh, okay. Anything on the table?
We don't, cause we haven't had a second, cause we, we don't quite have the wording yet.
Question about the wording or maybe a suggestion, um.
I don't think it fits.
What about supporting just public art in general versus the Roundabout?
Yeah, I, I like that because this is gonna come and go, and this document is a, is, is, is a living document for, for years, so I, I love that.
I mean, if I might, I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from, is I don't think it's appropriate to put it in this document. I would support a motion after we're done with this, to generally support the concept of the county, you know, supporting funding or whatever for this, but this is a state highway, this is not a county issue. I mean, it would, the county's position would, I mean, would simply be to say, hey, we support somebody coming up with money. Um, I certainly wouldn't expect the county to participate in it. Um, it's a state issue, probably a legislative issue, more of a lobbyist type issue for funding for it, but and or grants, et cetera, I mean, there's organizations that do this, but while I support what she's trying to do, I don't think this is an appropriate place for it.
So I think I would love to see this in a motion and see if anyone seconds it, and then we just kind of copy and paste Matt's comment into the deliberations because I think that, given what Peter just mentioned, that this is, this is an okay thing for us to recommend to the board if we wanted to recommend it, I don't think we're being out of place, but I, I totally get what you're saying. But let's just see if anyone wants to second this, um. And it sounds like you're, you, you liked Commissioner Altman's suggestion, so do you wanna word your motion the way you'd like it to read now?
I'm just wondering if this is a high priority compared to the other.
I, I don't wanna say my opinion yet, but I, I'd love to see it in a motion.
Okay, I say, I would, um, support for public art.
Okay. In Tamlo?
In Tamlo.
I mean, this is the Tamlo plan, so, okay. Okay. Um, so the motion reads, uh, support for public art in Tamlo, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded, um, so let's hear some further debate on the motion, Commissioner Kelly, you can start, since you're the maker of the motion.
I, okay, and this is, this kind of ties in with, um there seems to be this kind of grassroots movement from the, from the some members of the community, and actually, historically, there has been, uh, uh, Tamlo has been a very artistic, uh kind of community in general, um, historically, so I would say, hey, man, if we, if we support these kind of movements, then they could be the people in charge of beautifying our little, uh, river takeout, they could be in charge of, um just in, just having the community behind them, knowing that that they are supported in helping beautify and maintain, um, Tamlo.
Um, other debate on the motion, uh, Commissioner Williams?
Yes, I can definitely support art in public spaces. I do wanna say I remember when we were talking before this roundabout went in. Uh, it might have been an ODOT individual, but if I remember correctly, they were specifically keeping the roundabout fairly flat because of a safety issue. Uh, you're going to have two lanes coming downhill, you're gonna have semis in those lanes, and I remember them wanting a clear line of view across Highway Twenty, so art in public places, sure, I just don't think on the roundabout, it's, that's one thing, but I'm, I'm totally fine with public places, I just don't know that they're gonna get what they want in that roundabout.
Okay, um, so you would, so the way the motion reads right now, support for public art in Tamlo is?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I, I really liked this item too, because I think, I mean, I'm specific. It's okay, um, I'm specifically in favor of local art, like locally locally produced art or locally sourced art, you know, like a local group doing it, rather than again, an outside group coming in and saying, you know, like, you know, maybe ODOT wants to hire an artist from Portland to come in and do the art in Tamlo, I, I would like to carry forward the sentiment that it be a local group in charge of, if there is gonna be any art in the roundabout or art elsewhere in the community, I would love it if it were a local group deciding what art, and it'd be really cool if it's a local artist, but I don't, yeah, I don't wanna get involved in that, just whatever they think is good, whatever you guys think is good, I guess, um. But it would really be nice if it was the community picking the art, so I, I don't know if that's if me just saying that is enough to carry forward, if we need to put that in the motion, then support for local public art in Tamlo or local groups or something like that, but I think your motion gets at it. And if anyone else wants to add anything related to that, then, fine, but I think it's fine the way it is, but that's my reason for supporting it.
And I think, if, if, if I'm right, the roundabouts in the city of Bend, that's all done by a private group. A private nonprofit or something, so public art and public spaces will most likely be taken over by local public, I, I think.
That's good, that's very reassuring.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I mean, I think we're starting to get into the weeds and dictating who does what art where, and I might point out that, you know, some of the, the pieces of art in the city of Redmond were donated by uh, Phil Knight family, and, I mean, that's certainly not local, except that they now live in Terrebonne, but you know, I, like I say, I think we're kinda getting in the weeds on trying to dictate who's gonna do what, and and it's my understanding, at least most federal projects actually have a percentage of federal, and I don't know about state possibly, but there's a certain percentage is mandated for art. And art built into the construction of those projects, so I'm quite, I'm not real sure why it wasn't already dealt with.
Can't remember for the feds, I know the state, it's one, minimum of one percent has to go for public art on, um, state projects. Um, also, people certainly have the ability to, um, petition the Board of County Commissioners for funding for it, it doesn't necessarily have to be in a policy document.
Yeah.
Okay, great, other, uh, Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Like to call a question, please.
Okay, um, Commissioner Trowbridge, do you have anything you wanna add? I'm just trying to be sensitive to you being on Zoom and not missing anything.
No, I don't have anything to add, I, I kind of agree with, with Commissioner Cyrus, I mean, I think it's great what, what we're talking about here, but is it even something that we have any, any say over, like, yeah, we could put our, yeah, let's, let's, let's put our best foot forward and say, yes, we support this. But I think we're spending a lot of time on something that we probably don't need to.
Okay, um, so any other further debate? Hey, uh, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Aye.
And I'll also vote yes, so it is unanimous that we have voted to uh, recommend to the Board of County Commissioners support for public art in Tamlo. Other motions? Commissioner Cyrus?
I'll try one. I move to, um, adopt the package of recommendations as amended and move it forward to the Board of Commissioners.
I'll second.
Okay, adopt the package of recommendations as amended?
Correct.
Amended, move it forward to the Board of County Commissioners, okay.
I, could, I have another one, I'd like to say can I say, uh, I have one more?
So, um, now.
I say no?
Now, now we're gonna go to debate on the motion, starting with the maker of the motion, and then I'll be talking to you to get some opposition on the motion, and, um, so Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, I, I thought Commissioner Kelly was done, and, uh, I would, I would suggest that if she doesn't have too many more, she'd just present them as amendments to the motion.
Sounds good, okay, um. Is there any debate against the motion, or would anyone like to amend the motion with their other?
Yeah, I, one thing that I took away from this, uh, process was that Tamlo is inherently, uh cautious about development, and they are also wanting more transparency in development and processes that are happening in Tamlo, um. My s- suggestion, and I don't, and I'm looking for guidance, is to have some sort of way to keep the community up to date on progress, that's development progress that's happening in the community, and whether that's like an annual, I don't, again I'm shooting from the hip, and I don't, and I know you guys have great processes, and, and I'm looking for help, but if it's some kind of like annual update newsletter, email, something that says, hey, community uh, the sewer is in, we had an application for this sewer process, or we had some way to to involve the community so that they feel that they are part of they have the opportunity to feel like they're part of the, uh help please?
Line info.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
There are for a number of different use categories, usually con- conditionally uses, things that require site plan review. Things that have public aspects to it, the bite and things like that, they all, they, um, as part of their, their process of being even applied for and entering a review phase with any kind of hearings body or just this, or just staff. There's, uh, what's called a notice of application, may, and it's, it depends on, uh, the number of surrounding properties, and also there's a, there's a certain radius distance, so there's a mailing that goes out according to just those objective rules of the, the distance to other properties that are surrounding the subject property on which something is proposed. Um, how that gets uh, you know, farmed out to even wider audiences are things we've seen more or less grassroots efforts around. There's sometimes local groups that provide newsletters, things like you've just said, neighborhood. There's sometimes local groups that provide newsletters, things like you've just said, neighborhood, things like that, that sort of repackage the county's notices. Um, maybe send it to their neighbors and things like that, but I mean, under our sort of procedural requirements, it's. That notice of application is really the main way that we get the, the word out there, gives, gives the public a, a way to provide comment. Um, it gives them a way to potentially to um appeal any kind of decision, really, that's, that's also rendered. Um, so that, that's just kind of our standard process that's in place now.
Brandon, oh, go ahead, Peter, sorry.
So, again, as Tarek said, depends on the zoning, so certain zoning, it's two hundred and fifty feet radius, other zoning, it's. Fifty, but they also have to post a sign visible from a public roadway that essentially has the file number, a brief description of what the proposal is. And then the planner's contact information. We also have websites with, have that same information on it.
Yeah, um, I, this is really helpful, um, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners to, to, to be refreshed on what it. What happens when there's a formal development application in Tumalo. Um, Commissioner Kelly and, and, and to the planning commissioner at large, I, what I heard Commissioner Kelly says. Almost creating a, I'll call it a, a community engagement. Uh, goal with a, a community engagement policy, which could be something like. Uh, convene a uh convene a uh, convene with staff, a community conversation. With Tumalo residents inter biannually, every three year, you, you get to determine the timeline. To allow Tumalo residents to, you know, engage, to engage in issues. Uh, that are, you know, prominent in the community or something to that extent. I, I would. I, I thought I was hearing you say, it would be helpful. Uh, o- over the, you know, periodically for the Community Development Department, maybe with. It, Tarek as a liaison to the Road Department. To come to the Tumalo community and, and have a listening, maybe it's a listening session where we're hearing from the community. Uh, and through that process, there's an opportunity organically to, what are there any updates with sewer? Are there, what's happening with public art? What's happening with that? That project that we just got a, a land use notice for, so. Um, that's, that, I'm just trying to build, if, if I'm getting. You may have, Peter and Tarek may have answered what your question, but if you're looking for a community conversation, a listening session. There could be a policy that respectfully asks. Uh, ask staff or, you know, uh, Deschutes County to reengage. And residents to, you know, update them on, to listen and to update them on uh land use matters that are. Occurring in Tumalo or in the, in the region. And that dialogue could, could allow for the transparency that the residents so desperately want.
That's exactly what I'm saying, because I feel like there's a lot of like rumors or misinformation that gets spread really quick. And it would be nice if there was some kind of um, like you said, annually or biannually updates. Um, so I need to phrase that in a, or where are we at in the formal?
Yes. We, we, we do have a motion that has been seconded and Commissioner Kelly is considering amending the motion. And making a motion to amend, uh, um, and so I took a few notes when Peter was. Yeah, I'm suggesting this, so some, just to some language, I'm not making the motion, so please don't. Feel like you need to use any of the words that I'm using, um, but basically, I think he's um suggesting that. You might move to uh have uh the Community Development Department engage in periodic citizen involvement meetings. To allow Tumalo residents to engage in prominent community issues.
That's perfect. I could have said it better myself.
Nothing, okay, we have our legal councils.
Marshall Assistant Legal Counsel, I really, I'm hearing what you're saying and I think it's a really good idea. I think that choosing the words, we have to be careful because if, if, you know, um, if the record's closed, you know, and so. If somebody comes to a meeting, they, they're gonna engage and they're, oh, nobody's gonna hear my comment, you know, and so. I think it may be like the word update, you know, or um, you know, edu-. I, I don't know if education is the right word, but I just worry about engagement because I think that that could imply that. There is more opportunity for public comment if that public comment period, if the record is closed or what have you. Um, just, I, I'm, I know I'm being super, super picky here, but I do really love the idea. So, um, even though I'm not on the board.
We change it to um, the Community Development Department to come to the community for periodic citizen involvement meetings. Um.
Period.
Because it's shorter and also gets rid of the engagement word.
And well, involvement, I don't know, I mean, I'm looking to, to.
Input, citizen input meetings, because then we get with what Peter was saying, listening.
Education meetings? A little bit concerned about.
You know, I'm wondering.
This in education meetings?
Yep.
Yeah, or how about community update?
Yeah, I like community update better because education makes, is sort of patronizing.
I just don't want to imply to anybody reading this that they like have another opportunity to kind of reopen. A decision that may.
That expectation.
Yes, yes.
Maybe instead of periodic, we should actually say what a periodic, it like biannually or.
Yeah.
Is biannual ever two years, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I guess the question I would have, is there any reason why? A local community association of neighbors, friends, family, whatever. Um, is there a reason they couldn't simply invite someone from the county to come in and have a community discussion? Um, at their, at their periodic availability and that we don't need anything even mentioned in the policy along these lines, it's official?
Yeah, I think that that was, that's kind of what I was getting at, where we've had requests from certain neighborhood groups before, and we've been. Definitely willing to come and come down to where they're at and give them updates, and um, I think that that's, that's uh. Something we do with some of our.
Let's, let, let's get our amendment seconded before we debate on it, just because I, I, I have some things to say about that too. Um, but I'm not going to debate with you about it until we have one amended, if we're even gonna have a second on this, so.
So far, we don't have a motion.
Yeah, so the amendment reads right now, Community Development Department to come to the community for, we want annually or biannually? Okay, biannually, biannual, community update meetings. So is there a second on this amendment, motion to amend?
Chair Kears, would you remind us, repeating the very beginning of that motion, just so I can capture the words correctly?
Yeah, um, the CDD, Community Development Department, to come to community. Or I guess we just change it to Tumalo, to Tumalo, Tumalo for biannual community update meetings.
Thank you.
Um, and so far, we don't have a second. Okay, I'll second it then, because I have some ideas about this, um, so, um. Do you have anything else you want to say before, or like as we debate the amendment? Okay. Um, then you've, since you've already mentioned why you think it's probably unnecessary, um, given that citizens could invite. Members of the county at any time, um, that's actually a really good point. Um, the only reason I think it might be nice to have it in the plan is because uh the citizens of Tumalo are, have been really engaged in this process. They do read these plans, um, people have this in writing, and when there's something in writing, people feel entitled to actually ask for it. And I don't know that it has occurred to anyone in Tumalo. Who, who, people who are having these meetings to call you guys and say, hey, come over, we want to talk to you. Um, every time that there has been engagement, it's been because you guys have hosted an open house, the county commissioners have gone there. I, I just don't, I don't know that it would occur to anyone if it's not actually said that this is an option. And I also think that um, there's, there's some distrust sometimes for government. Um, agencies, and so having this in there, that this is kind of a, hey, we, we want to communicate with you. We're committing to some level of communication with you. It, it might be a bit much, um, from like the commitment standpoint, because I know you, you guys as staff have tons and tons of things. On your plate, but I don't know, I just think it says a lot to say, hey, we don't want this to be an adversarial relationship. We want to meet with you regularly and ongoingly, so we know that this community is going to change in the future and. We just don't want people to feel like they're, it's being done to them, so that's why I'm in favor of it. Other thoughts?
I have a thought.
Commissioner Altman?
Um. Tumalo now has a planning commissioner who. Can engage with the community whenever they want or whenever you want. Um, which is not to say it's not important for the community to think that they can't engage with. CDD, but they now have like a more direct line to what's going on, um, because you're here, so. It's not in opposition or favor, in favor, it's just a comment.
Other comments?
Sure, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, I just, I certainly support the, you know, the community updates, the engagement. I, I don't think it's appropriate to put it into this document. Because then next thing we're going to be adding is, is that uh, we're going to do biannual reviews with the Sun River community and the Lapine community. And the Terrebonne community and every individual community, and now we've got staff spending half their time doing. Mandated updates as opposed to showing up on a request type basis. Uh, when it fits in the schedule, et cetera, in the community, and I just, I support the idea of keeping people updated. I would encourage certainly the Tumalo community to put together a Tumalo Association and put together a newsletter. And if somebody wants to track applications, I mean, they can put it in the newsletter and, you know, make a community newspaper, whatever. I mean, and call it the Kelly Paper, or, or however you want to do it, but yeah, the Kelly Report, but, but no. I don't think it's that appropriate to put into this document.
I tend to agree.
I agree with that as well. I think it's unnecessary.
Okay.
I just.
Will has his hand up?
If I may.
Yes, please.
Uh, you know, agreeing with Commissioner Cyrus, I think there's another thing to consider is that if we showed up biannually, which is every two years, biannually is twice a year. Um, if we showed up biannually, um, it might not well be, it might not be well timed to when the issues are occurring, right? You know, so the, um, so, you know, it may be like, hey, guess what? A bunch of stuff happened the last two years you would have been super interested in. It's done.
Too bad.
Right, you know, so. I think that, that, I think timeliness is going to be important too, and that, you know, I think that what we would, I mean, CDD would love to be part of this outreach. I'm thinking about, you know, we, you know, we, we have these mandates in land use when certain applications happen and notify within a certain radius. And that's a defined thing that doesn't necessarily reach everyone who might be interested in it. You know, and so, for example, if the Board of County Commissioners was making a decision about how sewers might be, a sewer pipe might be put in the road. That Myer might not be subject to notice, but certainly something the community would be interested in. And it's been a perennial difficulty with, you know, trying to engage with communities, how do we get that information out? If we push a bunch of information out, frankly, community development can look like it's stirring the pot. If we, you know, are like, hey, all you neighbors, come fight this development, it can look like that.
Hmm.
If we put out a bunch of notice, if we don't put out a bunch of notice, it looks like we're hiding the ball. When really, we want people to, you know, to be interested, and we're trying to catch them and they're engaged. You know, one of the things we could, we certainly are always available, you know, if there's an organization that wants us to come out and, you know, sit down at the bite. Or come for coffee, you know, like we did in the community engagements, we're always glad to come.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but trying to get a timely sort of programmatic engagement, I think. I have some, I have some difficulty with that. I, I really like the idea of being more available, but I don't know if it's the programmed meeting is the way to do it. But maybe, maybe we could, and this is not to get in the way of the motion, but maybe something that we could carry out of this is a discussion, is an interest in. Trying to explore what that ongoing engagement loo- looks like. It may be that as we come out of this plan. We could ask people, you know, as part of our email list, we have trouble with email lists that we can't um, by default include people in future list. We could say, hey, do you want to be retained on an email list where, you know, when there's, um, you know, when there's things that seem to be of. Uh, community interest that we're sending out to next door, other things like that, you would also be contacted at that time as part of sort of. Other things that had broader outreach. We've got to be careful because we can't expand notice radius of a particular application. But that would help us communicate with people on an ongoing basis, so um, I'm interested in thinking creatively about that, even if. The programmatic meeting is maybe not quite the right way to get at it.
So, um, as you're mentioning this, um, I, I would actually be happy with. Um, just some sort of mention of the opportunity for people to, any group to invite staff that already exists. Um, but maybe if it were just mentioned in the plan. Um, that's not changing anything that's already available to anyone in the community, if, if Sun River or Terrebonne or anyone else wants to have, invite you guys over. But maybe just, maybe. Um, if you're amenable to a friendly amendment, it could read something to the effect of, um, you know. I mean, uh. Something about having the option for uh, for citizens to invite. Uh, Deschutes County staff to any uh, community meetings in order to receive updates.
Encourage the community or encourage citizens to reach out to the CDD for.
Updates and information?
Yeah.
Or encourage residents and, or, uh, community organizations to reach out to Deschutes County, right? Because some issues may not be CDD-centric.
Good point.
You know, and then just.
Sorry, guys.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they're not laughing.
Okay, so would you consider a, a very broad but friendly amendment to um, encourage residents? Uh, change the wording to encourage residents and community groups to reach out to Deschutes County for updates and information? I know that's already available, I know it's redundant with what we're already doing, but I think it would be really nice to have it in here. Um, so I'm, I'm the seconder, so obviously I'm good with that. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything about this before we vote? Okay, so again, the motion we're now voting on reads, encourage residents and community groups to reach out to Deschutes County for updates and information.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, um, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Hi.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Uh, no.
No. Um, Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Altman?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Um, Commissioner Trobridge?
No.
Okay, and I'll vote yes, so that is five in favor, two against. Uh, for the motion to encourage residents and community groups to reach out to Deschutes County for updates and information.
Um, can I just say, add something, is, I know this is kind of like a frustrating topic, because it's like, we don't want to overburden staff that's already overburdened. But I think this like is the root of, of what, who we are, is increasing. Citizen involvement, and so I know it's redundant and it's already on the, you know, people should already know that they're allowed to do that, but. I think that, you know, in, in our discussion of this, I just really appreciate it because I think it just speaks to. The fact that we want people involved.
Okay, um, so now our motion still currently reads, adopt the package of recommendations. As amended and move it forward to the Board of County Commissioners. We don't have to change the wording of the motion despite that we've added an amendment. Because it's just included in Matt's clever wording of the package. Exactly, yeah, it's brilliant, good wording, okay, so that is the current motion that's on the table and. If there are other amendments to the motion, meaning other things that you would like to be in this package that we're eventually going to vote. To either move forward or not, um, now would be the time to move to add additional items to this package. No for Commissioner Kelly, anyone else want to add additional items to the package? Okay, so, um, does anyone have any questions about what the package includes? We've just been through it. Um, so I'm not going to read them all back unless anyone has any questions.
Can I, can I please verify that? Um, I did, I, I won't disclose, I can't, big on disclosures, that. I did miss uh, some of the uh, public meetings on this when I was absent. I did uh, review thoroughly the public record. And I, I am going to vote on this motion, so thank you for that opportunity, yeah.
Okay, um, anyone else? Question it is, um, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Hi.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Hi.
Vice Chair Hope Camp?
Hi.
Commissioner Altman?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Trobridge?
Hi.
And I'll also vote yes, so our motion to adopt the package of recommendations as amended and move it forward to the. Board of County Commissioners has unanimously passed.
So, wh- when will the first edition, the Kelly Chronicles?
Yeah, never. I'm here, I'm here for a, I'm here, but not to write a newspaper.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Commission, I'm going to stop sharing my screen right now, if that's okay?
Yes, that's okay, permission granted. Okay, um, so we'll now move to Planning Commission and Staff Comments, uh, starting with Peter Gatawski.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair and the Planning Commission, to Commissioner Kelly for brewing coffee. I think we didn't, we don't need it. Um, so which, which is, uh, uh, just want to first, I want to first compliment, uh, the Planning Commission for, um, you know, accommodating the first hearing on the comprehensive plan update. It's extremely important. Um, we welcome the public testimony and the diverse viewpoints and perspectives. And I just want to underscore, as we've done on numerous occasions, that take as much time as you want and need for these public hearings. Um, we don't want to project to our residents and our constituents and our agencies that somehow we're racing to a finish line. This is such an important document and, um, and I, I, I just, I want to underscore that, uh, as a commission, you, you have, you, you can take as much time as you believe is necessary for the public hearing and for deliberations ultimately. And then, uh, similarly, thank you for, for managing the Tumalo Community Plan. Um, that was a significant process. It's headed to the board and, uh, thanks to, to Peter Russell and, and, uh, Tarek Rollins for, for managing that project. We're, we're, we're really excited to get this closer to the finish line. Um, as we think about the fall schedule, I, um, I, I, unless the Planning Commission has other expectations, um, you know, I, this is the time of year where we get closer to the holidays and, uh, we, we schedules get, get busy. What we have penciled in is one, one meeting in November, which is typical, which is November 9th. And then one meeting in November, which is just.
Thought, thought we had one on the 30th, also the la- the 5th Thursday.
There is a 5th, there is a 5th Thursday in November, to the extent that you want to use that. Typically it's, we meet the second and the fourth, and of course the fourth Thursday of November is Thanksgiving.
It's looking forward to Turkey Day.
Right, right. That happens to be my birthday. Every, every, every five or seven years. If the commission.
Happy birthday early.
Repeat that last?
My, my birthday is actually on Thanksgiving.
Oh, happy early birthday.
Yeah, yeah.
November 23rd?
November 23rd.
All right, man.
Um, so, um, I was just saying, if, if, that, that typically it's, there's, we, the commission convenes the second and fourth Thursday. Commissioner Williams is right. There is a, there is a, a 5th Thursday. If, if you find you want to utilize that meeting, we, we can accommodate that. Um, I, it's entirely up to you. Um, in the past, we've had one meeting in November. Um, at the second week of November and one meeting in December, and that meeting is December 14th. Uh, again, you, you don't have to make a decision now. I just wanted, uh, we want to, you know, we want to accommodate your, your schedules and there is no rush. And, and you've had quite a busy year. Um, so if you find that the meeting on November 9th satisfies your appetite for, for that month of commission business, that's totally appropriate. On the same, at the same time, if you find, feel compelled that November 30th, uh, is, is warranted, we can, we can make that possible too. Um, so just wanted to alert you to the calendar and allow you to make those, those decisions, but definitely one meeting in December. Um, I, I was thinking back to our field trip that we had in September and I, um, and our, our retreat and field trip, and I just wanted to let you know that the Stevens Track, which we visited, the UGB Amendment, um, that had, went to a hearing, um, on October 11th to a hearings officer. Um, there's no decision that's been made yet. It'll be pretty much a formality because of the special legislation that allows the city of Ben to bring that eastern half of Stevens Track Road into the urban growth boundary amendment. But I just thought you'd be interested to know that that process is happening and in the next month or two or three, um, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a hearing and likely, um, uh, uh, adopt an ordinance that brings that property into the urban growth boundary. So uh, another reason for why we wanted to show you that. So that's, that's, those are all the updates I had, but, uh, thank you again for a, a, a great meeting. And I, again, I appreciate the, the backup for coffee in the event that we needed, but, but we're, we're doing.
Commissioner Williams?
Uh, Peter, for whatever reason, were we as a planning commission ever involved with the Stevens Road tract? Cause I just don't remember us ever discussing it.
No, I mean, the, the answer is no. Um, the, the process, the first, the western half was brought in as part of the city of Ben's urban growth boundary in 2016. Um, that interesting that, the testimony that you received today about the Department of State lands, uh, property getting re-designated from exclusive farm use to multiple use agricultural ten, that is, that did happen. Um, and so that was land that was zoned E F U, was not, had no history of irrigation, no history of farming. Um, so, uh, to Commissioner Williams' questions, the reason why we wanted to go out and have you see it is we got to talk about the non-resourced land component, the rezone, and also just to get a sense of how the city of Bend is investing on its eastern front of, of urbanization. And I think over the years, that's where Ben's going to be growing. And so to kind of see that, of course, you know, obviously lands to the east of that property are subject to county jurisdiction, but, um, it's, I think it was just, it's an important area to kind of be familiar with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Will?
Yeah, thank you. Briefly, um, just wanted to keep you updated on what's happening generally. So, uh, in front of the board on November 1st, that, uh, Historic Landmarks Commission, uh, update that we were talking to you about, um, our difficulties recruiting Historic Landmarks Commissioners and, uh, putting a temporary uh, sort of emergency procedure to run that through a land use process. That's going in front of the board for public hearing on November 1st. Also, second reading of the ADU amendments, uh, long time in, in the making. Certainly you all have participated. Interesting, uh, turn of events, the five acre limitation in South County to protect groundwater had, uh, been, has been added back to that amendment in the current version that's, uh, that's scheduled for signature. So that it, uh, it bounced back and forth between two and five and is back to five. Uh, coming your way, of course, um, on November 9th, the continuation of the hearing from this evening, as well as the, uh, the Senate Bill 1013 Residential Tendencies RV uh, opportunity that's come out of the state that the board's been real interested in. Also, speaking of outreach, um, Commissioner Kelly, I just wanted to let you know, I really appreciate, you know, you're, you're entering into this world of motions and Robert rules and you know, you're here as a, you know, important representative of the community of Tumalo, bringing those ideas forward. And I just, I want to say that we appreciate it, you know, that you're, um, that the, uh, Roberts rules can be a little bit intimidating. It certainly was baffling to me when I started into it. And so just appreciate that you're bringing that forward. If you ever want to, um, we meet with, uh, Chair Kiras, uh, on the Monday before, um, a, uh, a planning commission meeting and we could get either add you to that or schedule, uh, a separate meeting for you. If you're like, hey, Will, I think I'm going to want to make some motions this week. Can, can we talk about what those might look like? The ups, the downs, any concerns planning staff has with those? We're a hundred percent, percent available to any of you for those purposes. So if you ever want to reach out and, uh, workshop something, we'd love to be part of that.
Thank you. And, and props to Tarek because I've actually met with him twice. So this individually, because I have been trying to catch up and understand. So thank you. So, and I, and I'll take you up on that because yes, increased education is, I'm all about this. Thank you.
Yeah, anything we can do to leverage your voice, um, and any of your voices in this process, you know, through getting through some of the and the, the bureaucracy, the red tape, the confusion about how the zoning works. I'm always glad to help out with that. And thanks again for your work on both these projects this evening.
Excellent. Okay, um, Commissioner Williams?
Uh, not much to say. Just thank you for the usual dedication from, uh, all of our planners and directors and, uh, legal counsel.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yep, I'll be real beef. I, I, um, certainly second most of the comments that, uh, Peter made and thank everyone for a fast and efficient, uh, hearing and deliberation on, uh, on the Tumalo thing. And I thought things went real well tonight.
Uh, Commissioner Trobridge?
Uh, I don't have any comment.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Hofcamp?
A couple. Um, in the past, I've thanked, uh, specific, uh, colleagues of mine for one reason or another. Um, tonight I just like to give a quick shout out to Commissioner Kelly, our Tumalo Area Commissioner for all of her heavy lifting with the Tumalo Community Plan. Um, excellent work, uh, colleague. Um, a quick comment on growth, um, in Bend, um, and in Deschutes County. Um, the planning topic, um, of the, of all the topics, it's the topic and has always been in this community, in the county and in Bend. Um, the extraordinary growth. Um, I understand that sometimes, uh, planners, uh, community development staff, uh, us up here steeped, um, to some one extent or another in state, uh, land use law, believe that it must be accommodated by state law. And there's, there's language that can be interpreted that way. In my view, uh, it doesn't mean that growth necessarily has to be overly accommodated or embraced or rushed or certainly unplanned or unregulated. Um, doesn't mean I'm anti personally development, and I think there's a distinction between development and just growth, growth, growth. And, um, like I think some of my colleagues up here, I hear all the time from my constituency in the county and in the city that, um, that the growth is, uh, extraordinary and, um, unwelcome. And, um, sometimes that's characterized as slamming the door behind them. Um, or you got here, you got yours, so you're keeping others out. I think that that gives short shrift to a very legitimate feeling and, um, people that don't want to, um, to see the kind of crowded conditions and congestion and other problems that come with growth. One of which I'll, I'll propose is an inverse affordability. Um, the more people that come here, it does not become more affordable per capita. It gets more expensive per capita. Anyway. Um, lastly, um, uh, and I mean this absolutely respectfully, colleagues, um, about, uh, uh, Will mentioned it a moment ago, but about our Roberts rules and our parliamentary procedure. It is my observation, just mine, that, um, I, I, I sometimes our proceed, our, our, our proceedings in this body feel um, overly constrained by Roberts rules, even constipated in some of our discussions. We get so caught up and, and I mean this respectfully, this, this isn't directed at an individual, at, uh, the chair that runs our meetings, who's excellent, at, uh, at, um, colleagues up here that are versed in parliamentary procedure. I've served on a number of commissions and boards, like many of my colleagues have. Um, uh, some have served, uh, significantly longer than me, uh, on this particular body. But there's something about this body and our procedure that it's not working optimally in my view. It's my observation. I, I understand the reasons for Roberts rules and I understand it's in common use, but there's something about how it's applied or it's overuse here. Um, that is not quite optimal or far from optimal. Um, just my observation, once again, not directed at any one person. And I don't have a detailed alternative to offer really, other than a, a loosening, um, of those, um, uh, Roberts rules. It's, um, yeah, just an observation. That's what I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Altman?
Um, I just want to say to Nicole, I meant to say to you and Matt that I thought tonight's packet was really well done. I don't know which of you did it or if you collaborated on it together, but I just found it very visually appealing and nice to read. And I liked it very much. So please pass that along to him. Thanks.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, thank you, everyone. And Steph, I really just appreciate y'all and I, and I really appreciate my colleagues as I kind of fumble through this process. I'm rea- I'm really enjoying it though. And I think I'm really enjoying it because I have you guys on my team. And it really feels like a team effort and, and, and with staff. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for having me. And I'm, I'm really, um, enjoying it and I'm learning a ton. And, uh, yeah, I'm grateful to be here.
We're grateful to have you. Okay, well, in that case, it now being eight fourteen, I'll go ahead and join the meeting.